My name is Rosina Matshwene. I'll be directing this meeting. We are from Parliament of the Republic of South Africa. We have the members of the Committee on Human Settlement accompanied by the technical teams, which support staff. I'm going to request the technical team to rise so that you can see them. And we have the translation team, already they've started doing their job. I'm going to ask them, just those that are not translating, to rise. We have, as I've indicated, we have members of the Portfolio Committee on Human Settlement, led by myself as the chair of the committee. On my left hand side, we have Honorable Male Macha. And then next to him is Honorable Tafeni. On my right hand side, we have Honorable Tseki. Next to him is Honorable Malachi. The committee consists of more than 10 members, unfortunately others, they've given apologies. We are here as members of the Portfolio Committee to come and solicit your view on the bill that was table in Parliament called the Consumer Housing Protection Bill. Is it here to ensure if the Wetzund warb is being protected? Before we proceed, I want to check with yourselves that are you comfortable with the translation that we have now, or do we have anybody who needed a different translation, except the one that is been done now? Is it all easy for you to translate the combination of languages? Are we comfortable with the Saitona Africans?
Yes!
Okay. Is it easy for you to translate Africans in Saitona? If there is anybody, as we proceed, if he feels that is left out, you can come to the technical team and indicate to them and we will allocate a translator to yourselves, so that we can have smooth communications amongst ourselves. If you feel that another language combination is lost, it's welcome to register in the technical space so that we can help you. And we have the sign language translation, I'm not sure why they are not doing it now. As I've indicated, we are here in Kimberley, we have started in Apinten yesterday, we were in Kurumani, today we are here in Kimberley. Is it easy for you to translate Apinten and Kuruman? It's easier in Kimberley? Our... We, as the Portfolio Committee, we believe that as we arrived in the town, we should then give the owners of the town to welcome us. We have amongst us the speaker, he can come and welcome us and then introduce some councillors that are around in the hall. If the visitors feel that the residents who are here are in the front, we would like to speak to the speaker and conclude the other routes for the stall. Madam Speaker, who are in your hands? Speaker, who is here?
Thank you very much, Chairperson of Human Settlement Committee. I would like you to be welcomed in Kimberley with your committee members. I hope that the community will be able to take what you are about to give and go and implement it in our different communities. I'm currently here with my councillors, Honorable Councillor Ditiko.
Thank you for coming to the committee, I welcome you and you. I hope that the information that you give to us will be used in the community and then be spread to the different communities. I would like to talk to you.
Honorable Councillor Bopape.
Then I would like to talk to you.
Honorable Councillor Ngunkane.
Councillor Ngunkane, can you repeat the surname please for me, Speaker?
Honorable Councillor Noliche.
That is Noliche.
I think those are the councillors within our midst.
This is the route that we are on.
To the members of Parliament, the first thing that we were not quite aware of was the fact that we wanted a lot of our communities to be part of the meeting. It was unfortunate that now it was done on a Sunday because we thought that it will be done on Saturday, but I would really like to welcome you and I hope that community members, you will be able to take whatever that we all be given today with regards to this housing bill and implement it and go and give it to our different communities, thank you.
Thank you, Parle Minsire. I would like to bring that we are not aware that we are here on a Sunday today and it's a shame to us that we should have been here yesterday. But we welcome you and we hope that the community, who are here, can be aware that the information about the Wetzund warb can be taken away and can be implemented. Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker, for welcoming us. Thank you, Speaker, that you saw us today. As I've indicated, that our purpose for visiting Kimberley today is to solicit your views on the bill that was publicized by Parliament called the Consumer Housing Protection Bill. Since we are here today, we would like to know if the Wetzund warb is protected? This is our last leg here in Northern Cape, we have started in Apinten and then yesterday we were in Kurumani, today we are here in Kimberley. Apinten and Kuruman is our last stop here for the prevention. Before we conduct any public hearings, we send our teams on the ground to engage with the stakeholders on the bill itself so that as we come to such meeting, the input can be enriched with the quality input from communities because they would have been educated about the bill itself. Before the open bar of the war is held, we would like to see the community's visits to the Wetzund warb so that when we come to the open bar of the war, the community is engaged and can answer the questions and ask the questions related to the Wetzund warb. Can I check in the house how many of you have attended this engagement? I would like to see how many of you have visited the Wetzund warb. Can we see? Okay, thank you very much. Goodbye, thank you. We just needed to see the number of people who had attended this engagement prior to this meeting, not that we will use it to discriminate those that have attended the workshops. We try to see how many people have visited the Wetzund warb and not discriminate anyone. Nonetheless, we'll take this opportunity to summarize the bill for those that might have not have an opportunity to engage with our teams or engage with the bill itself. We will try to make the Wetzund warb a better position for the people who have visited the Wetzund warb. As I've indicated, that the bill is called the Housing Consumer Protection Bill. Since we are here today, we would like to know if the Wetzund warb is protected? The bill Housing Consumer Protection Bill of 2021 seeks to repeal the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act of 1998. The Wetzund warb is the purpose of protecting the Wetzund warb for the Wetzund warb in 1999. The Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act came into effect from the 4th of June 1999, which was enacted in 1999 and operationalized on June again on 1999. And the bill itself, sorry, the act, was then amended several times, three times, which makes the Department of Human Settlement and National Home Builders Registry Council as a regulator report realize that some of the provisions of the act are problematic or need or impact negatively on the efficiency of the execution of the council's mandate, therefore required that reviews. The Wetzund warb is protected for the Wetzund warb in 1999. It has been tried three times. The Department of Human Resources and National Home Builders Registry Council has identified the negative effects of the Wetzund warb. The Housing Consumer Protection Bill seeks to ensure adequate protection of housing consumers and effective regulation of the home builders industry inter alia, strengthening the regulatory mechanisms, strengthening the protection of housing consumers, introducing effective enforcement mechanisms and prescribing appropriate penalty or sanction to deter non-compliance by the home builders. Here the Wetzund warb is protected for the Wetzund warb has the purpose of providing enough protection for the Wetzund warb and the effective regulation of the home building industry to ensure, furthermore, the regular mechanisms to strengthen the protection of the Wetzund warb, to strengthen the effective measures and to establish legal penalties for the Wetzund warb so that the home builders can keep up with the needs. In addition, the bill seeks to address the economic transformation of the industry through the introduction of provisions relating to the warranty fund surplus, which may be utilized towards developmental programs for the home building industry. There the Wetzund warb has the purpose of providing economic transformation of the home building industry. It is associated with the Warburg Fund surplus, which can be used for the development program for the home building industry. The bill seeks to create an enabling environment for new entrants into the home building industry through the introduction of contractual provisions that ensures the sustainability in the market. The Wetzund warb has the purpose of providing a strong environment for new entrants to the home building industry. It is associated with the contractual measures to ensure the market stability. The bill seeks to align and create synergy with other relevant pieces of legislation such as the Public Finance Management Act of 1999 and the Promotion of Administrative Justice Act of 2000. The Wetzund warb has the purpose of providing other important pieces of information, such as the open financial assistance of 1999 and the provision of administrative rights of 2000 in order to bring in energy to the market. The summary of the provisions of the bill are as follows: Chapter 1 of the bill deals with the definition, application of the act and the application of the Public Finance Management Act to the council. We have taken the Wetzund warb to the description of the Wetzund warb and the open financial assistance. The bill makes provision for inter alia the definition of bill to expand the protection of protection afforded housing consumers by including repairs, renovation, alteration and additions to an existing home under the council regulatory regime. The Wetzund warb has the purpose of providing furthermore the description of the word "build", so that the Wetzund warb is protected from the Wetzund warb's areas to be cleared, the construction work, closing, changes to the house, the existing houses, the regulations of the council. The scope of application of the legislation is extended to include not only the builders who undertake home building as a business, but also owners' builders. Owners' builders are included in the definition of a home builder and are required to register with the council. The access to the Wetzund warb is cleared for the building industry, but also for the local builders. Local builders are required to register with the Wetzund warb and must register with the council. Chapter 2 of the bill seeks to provide for the continuation of the council's establishment in terms of the section 2 of the act, as a jurisdiction persons to be known as national... to be known as National Home Building Regulatory Council. It further seeks to provide for the objectives of the council, the governance and the structure of the council.
Mo kaula ya bu bedi ya mola komo onu yona ibata ho tchamelaka ho tjo le di so tjo apela kha kancelé eh ilen hori eh komi lo ya kaka rolo two ya mola hori eh tjo lele pele. Me mo ho yona ho diru lo hori lerewo lilering motowa se mola lisimole huizi wijaga lilering kancelé ya mola diwa waset cha ba wa kaha ya ma to.
Whipstick 2: Wetzundwarb hättin doo um Verschiedung te mag für die Fortsetting von Iwret. Angestall ungefolge Artikel 2 von Iwet als Rechtsperson wat als die Nationalheißbauers Regulasirat bekennstahn. Deadit vorst tinn doo um Verschiedung te mag für die Urmerke Besteer instruktiere von die Raute.
Chapter three of the bill seeks to provide for the registration of home builders and developers, the establishment of the register of a home builders, the requirement of the registration, the suspension of the registration, grading of a home builders and liabilities of an unregistered home builders or developers.
Kaula ya bo raro ya mola komo onu yona eh tja kisa di tja lo sedi amanangle ho wadi siwa kaba ahki bama to mo ho le ba to ba obarekang ma fashe ba bu ba aha mo ho one. Kape ibata horo ho komiwe registera ya ho ikuadi sa me kape ya manali di patafaloza ikuadi sa me kadi nakosedi we lo ho belwa ko thoku eh kaba to baba kilenba ba ba wadi si to kantla ma eh mo ma we. Ho bo hona kapele ma eh mo aba ahki bama to ba eh lo hori ma ikarebelo abone aho aha ma to a twanitzo horo aha maneli di patafaloza sedi batliwang limo ba to ba eh len ba tchami baba sa ikuadi sa.
Whipstick 3: Wetzundwarb hättin doo um Verschiedung te mag für die Registralie von Heißbauers en Entwickler die Instelling von Register von Heißbauers, die Vereistes für Registralie, Obskorting von Registralie, Gradering von Heißbauers en Ansprechlichkeit von um ungerегистrierte Heißbauer of Entwickler.
Chapter four of the bill seeks to provide for the establishment of the register of the enrollment the enrollment of a home prior to the commencement of its construction by the home builder, consequences for failure to enroll a home, duties in respect of a subsidy housing project and the consequences of a failure by a member of the Executive Council or member of mayoral committee responsible for human settlement, a social housing institution or a subsidy housing delivery agents to comply with the provision of the act.
Kaula ya boni ya mola othomo yona ibata horo ho komiwe registera ya ikuadi so ho bo honelidi tamaraho eh sedi tja ukualelo angeba to ba baritelezo inki huji jo ho wadi sa nto ya boni pele ba simulola ho ya aha. Eh kape honeli ho re di tiro ho lebelo tsa kape honeli tu so ya projekya ya ma to lidita maraho ta hori tlelewa ha le lo kolak kancelé hoza kuritama ha hoza le lo kolak omi tiya meyara yo ro le ma ikarebelo kama to hoza se teo salo a hoza ma to hoza mudiriwa tebo lo ya ho aha ma to eh horo obamele di tja lo tsa mola.
Whipstick 4: Wetzundwarb hättin doo um Verschiedung te mag für die Instelling von Register von Inskraevens die Inskraevens von ein Haus vor die Anfang von Iwet darvan der Heißbauer gefolge für Verschein om ein Haus in te skraev Pflichte ten Opzichte van ein Subsidiebauarbeitsprojekt en die Gefolge van ein Verschein diere Lit van ein Ausführende Raute of Lit van die Burgersmeisterskomitee verantwortlich für mensliche Nerdications Maatschablige Bauarbeitsinstellung of a Subsidiebauarbeitsauflegeringsagent om an die Bepolings von Iwet te volduen.
Chapter five of the bill seeks to provide for the funds of the council, the home warranty funds, additional funding through money appropriated by parliament as the council's regulatory mandate is a public function, the establishment of a nonprofit company, management of funds, the fees of the council, commencement and the duration of the warranty, the maximum and the minimum amount payable from the warranty funds, claims and limitations.
Kaula ya bo tano ya mola othomo yone eh tja kisa vanu fa di tja lo tsa mola za ho tchamelaka ma tole a kancelé le tolela ma tola nete falezo ma tole a tja lelezo kama di a tjo tje parlamenta jaka ele taulelo ya taulo ya kancelé ili diro ya set cha ba ho komiwa ha kampani esadi ring morokozo taulo ya ma tole di duelo za kancelé ho simulola le se bakasa nete falezo twa twa ehwa ho dimo le ehwa tasin eh duelo an hoza ho le tolela nete falezo di topo lidite kanyeto.
Whipstick 5: Wetzundwarb hättin doo um Verschiedung te mag für die Fonds von die Raute die Heiß-Warburg-Fonds bei kommende Bevondsing der Gelde wat di ri Parlament bewillig wort angesien die Raute regulierende Mandate Openbare Funktion is. Die Stichting von ein niewensgevende Maatschappai die Besteer von Fonds die Gelde von die Raute Anfang en Dur von die Warburg die Maximum en Minimum Betrag betalbar ai die Warburg-Fonds ai se en Beperkings.
Chapter six of the bill seeks to prohibit the procurement of services to build a home which form part of the subsidy housing project from a home builder who is not registered with the council relies on a home that was not enrolled with the council in his tender submission who previously failed to rectify or complete the ratification of structural defects as directed by the council without reasonable grounds or who failed to disclose any information prescribed by the Minister of Human Settlements.
Kaula ya bo rataro ya mola othomo eh bata ho tibela eh tsengile ya di tirolo ya ho aha ma to eh ilen hori jika rolo ya projekya ya tu so ya ma to aho aha hoza ho mo ahki wa ma to yo sa ikuadi sa goa kancelé ai ka ya kanko eh ine eh sa wadi siwa goa kancelé wa arumela tenna ra ya haa hwe eh yo mona koi ewo fitileng ho ni bile aretelezo inke ho bakaña poso ipe fela eh ine eh le te wmonjo jaka ho lae tje kancelé horo adirejalo me asa dirajalo ndalele bakale ipe hoza mo to yo retelezo inke ho tja kisa tiri mosoto onwe lenwe eh tchalisoto inke to na ya ma to.
Whipstick 6: Wetzundwarb hättin doo um die Verkriechung von die Dienste von ein Heißbauer wat nie bei die Raute geregistriere is ni te verbiet om ein Haus te bou wat jo vorm van ein Subsidiebauarbeitsprojekt wat stahtmo op ein Haus wat nie bei die Raute in geskraev was in sei tender Vorlage nie wat vorien Verschein mit om i Rechtsstellung von strukturelle Fouten so ist di ri Raute gelaas ohne redliche Grund der Rechte stau oft te voltoi of wat Verschein mit om en um enige Einrichtung bekenn te mag wat di ri Minister von Menschlichen Nerdications vorgeskraev is.
Chapter seven of the bill seeks to provide for the enforcement of the provision of the bill once enacted. It also seeks to provide for the appointment and the duties of inspectors, the establishment and powers of the compliance and enforcement committees, matters relating to administrative and substantive non-compliance and penalty relating there to.
Kaula ya bu singpa yone ya mola othomo onu eh bata ho tchamelaka tira cha to ya di tchamelo tsa mola othomo fa mola othomo o osetu otsenzwe tirisonka kape eh bata ho tchamelaka ho tatiwa mo ho li di tiroza ba tchatuwi ho komiwa ha di tataza komi tiya obamele li tira cha to ya di tja lo. Di tja sedi amanangle tsa ma iso le mo teo wa hoza obamele li di ko tcha o sedi amanangle yone kaula eh tjo lela ho bata eh horo kape honeli tchameloka di tza la sedi we tsa tchaboloa ya ho tchan di tolo mola oza busini mo ho li di kileto.
The chapter further seeks to provide for alternative dispute resolution, criminal offenses and sanctions.
Eh kaula eh eh tjo lela kape ho ba ho tchamelaka di tza la sedi we eh lo hori tchaboloa ya di ho tchan di tolo mola oza sa ikobeling mola othomo onu mo ho li di tiroza busini lidikelezo.
Whipstick 7: Wetzundwarb hättin doo um Verschiedung te mag für die Aftwingen von die Bepolings von die Wetzundwarb so drautet verorden is. Deadit oek tinn doo um Verschiedung te mag für die Anstelling en Pflichte von Inspekteurs die Stichting en Befoogterre van die Nakommingsenhandtowingskomitee Angelentere wat verbandau medii administrative en wesentliche Nienakoming en Strafmaterials wat dorme verbandau. Die Whipstick hätt verder tinn doo um Verschiedung te mag für alternative Geskalbeschlachtigung, kriminele Oertredings en Sanktis.
Chapter eight of the bill seeks to provide for the various matters including the home building manual, the makings of rules by the council and of regulation by the minister, the recovery of fees, vicarious liabilities, the personal liability of members, directors, trustees of home builders, duties of the estate agency, financial institutions, conveniences, the code of conduct of the council members, home builders, developers and other industry role players. This chapter also deals with the transitional matters.
Kaula ya bo ro bedi ya mola othomo onu eh bata kape ho tchamelaka di tja sedi farlohanen sedi tsengile tsa kaidi ya ho aha ma to ho dira kha melao ke kancelé le melao kato na ho bona di duelo ma ikarebelo amo to eh amo to yo mo we ma ikarebelo a mu awama loko ba kaidi ba tjo komi di ba bahi bama to ba tchakis eh di tiroza ba regisi bama to di teo za di chelete ba bule di eh di koudu tsa ma isolo amaloko a kancelé hoza a bahi bama to ba tchakis mo ho le ba za karolo ba ba we ba industri.
Whipstick 8: Wetzundwarb hättin doo um Verschiedung te mag für Verschleihe Angelentere in Slaiden di Heißbauhandleiden di mag van reals di ri Raute en van Regulasis di ri Minister di verhal von Gelde bloßverfangende Ansprechlichkeit die beschwindige Ansprechlichkeit van jeder direktiere Tresties van ein Heißbauer Pflichte van Eindomsagent finanzielle Instellings Aktebesorge die Gedragskur des Verratsereder Heißbauers und Entwicklers en andere Rollspiele in die Bedarf die Whipstick and Urhungsangelentere.
On economy and employment and infrastructure development as noted above, the bill seeks to provide for the warranty fund surplus to be utilized towards the transformative human settlements developmental programs which facilitate growth, skills development and economic transformation in the home building industry.
Me hara tamo kanyanya ekonomi tirole tchaboloa ya ma fara tcha cha jaka fa ho bolezo fa ho dimo mola komo onu obata ho tchamelaka ma di assets in alitoli la nete falezo ho di ri sediwa amanane o a tchaboloa ya ma to a bo tcha wa au akonsang horo honele kolo eh tchaboloa ya bo koni le petolo ya ekonomo mo industriya ho aha ma to.
Economische Indienstnehmung en Infrastrukturentwicklung so ist hier bo genume heri Wetzundwarb tinn doo um Verschiedung te mag da die Warburg-Ourskotfonds angewend wort für herskippen ein Menschlichen Nerdications Entwicklungsprogramme wat grui Vahrheitsentwicklung en ekonomische Umformung in die Heißbaubedarf behartig.
The bill seeks to provide emerging home builders a greater access and a protection through equitable registration requirements is grading system, the regulation of certain contractual matters and the continuance development and training. The proposed provision covering the contractual matters between the home builders, developers and employers are meant to contribute toward the sustainability of the emerging home builders and the growth of the home building industry.
Mola othomo kape obata horela na kapichelelo sedi tjerlezo ewo kolo ho ba ahki bama to baba simulang ho tchachelela eh kadi tjo ke ho sedi likaleka nangza wadi so za tsa ma iso ya ho tchaola taulo ya di tja sedi riling za kontraka le tchabolo lo mo ho le ka ti so sedi tjo lela pele di tchamelo sedi tsitsinzwe sedi tsengile tsa di tja za kontraka ma harerika ba ahki bama to ba tchakisiba ba tapi di diro hona le seabe ho tjo lelo ya ba ahki bama to baba tchachelelang mo ho le ho lo ya industriya ho aha ma to.
Die Wetzundwarb hättin doo um an opkommende Heißbauers großer Toegang en Beskermung te bit di ermittel van billigere Registralie vereistes gradierend Stalsel die Regulierung von sekere Kontraktielle Angelentere en di erlopende Entwickling en Opleiding. Die vorgestellte Bepolings van die Kontraktielle Angelentere tessen Heißbauers Entwickler en Werkgevers Deck is bedo om bei te dra tot i vohhoubarheit van opkommende Heißbauers en i grui van die Heißbaubedarf.
That was the summary of the bill.
Eh ba ga so inele onu otsobukaño ya mola othomo ewo.
Det ist die Opsumung van heri Wetzundwarb?
Now we are going to open for you to make inputs on the bill.
Jano ritlo ho lubulela se ba kasa hori eh lonse di tja lo tsa lonakamala othomo.
Und so now, gelentei bitan i om i insa te lewer?
As I've indicated that the purpose of us coming to yourself is to solicit your views around this bill so that we can strengthen it because at the ultimate end it's going to govern yourselves.
Jaka hakila ka tchalo sa me kala lo aho bo rele fanu fati ho tla hujkama ikujo alonakamala othomo onu o horo lonse di tja lo tsa lonat sedi tlenho nunu tsa mola othomo onu o kuabo felon i tlenho namola o laulang lona.
So segresgenume is di doo van ons besuk van dag om i insa raken di heri Wetzundwarb ente forede wand op di au ende van i dag han di i insa bei dra tot heri Wetzundwarb en heri Wetzundwarb sol uer i regier.
And your input is very important to us as parliament because this law is going to govern yourselves. We want to hear your views around the bill itself.
Kajalo di tja lo tsa lonat nitlo konanu ho tcha tara bata ho duja ba ga so ya ka hara tchalo sa eh itlo hona di tja tsa mola othomo eh lo hori eh ubusa lonak hoza ni pusakatiro so ya one.
Heri Wetzundwarb is pa belangreken darum is it fonds belangreken om i insa uer heri Wetzundwarb ente forede.
All.
Obu, horo zua gay, obu cha losa kora awe na, udumala na le malaukomo onu, o ho za ochana na lo.
Can I see hands that want to speak?
Ko pa ho bo na ma boha ba ba tla ho bua.
Number two, number three, number four, number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, number ten. You are the ten person.
Are you?
Good. So we, you have three minutes to make your inputs. And then those that have a submission to make, you can go to that table and go and give your submission if you don't want to speak.
Kajalo, eh, rotla bo, on se di chwailoza lo na, me hako na le ba ba sabatlingo ho bua, me ona li di chwailoza ba ja ho dincha, oka di kwaala, oye motafo lenyenu, eh, witi obanezo ne, hako na mola to ka ho diro ja.
Tores, tri belangreken pento umtu undau vanyer i sprekbeert krei, or is om erstens to undau om i naam te num, en to undau of i, of om, for ons te se, of i saa mi wetsundwarb steam en of i de tien stand en ok fa ons ba di tide fa dree minite te hau. As i da na ok vaderen saeit wat uer di dree minite tide park sol gaan, is i welcome om e geschreven indi ning ba di understenings personeel ente din.
Eh, ma, ma wa, 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 wa za manka pati. Mo first mike adjuona mola lumkote. Can you give it a mike, speak from where she is?
Ba mi, ba ro, oka na. Yeah, okay.
Do we have any disability persons amongst us who wants to make inputs so that we give them an opportunity first?
Aho na le ba gomoharaha ro na ba, ho re, ba na lema tata a, eh, maybe wo hola bobu ri lenja mele, eh, ba elon kore rekaba romele la microphone, ho ra ba bua, ba nze ba le mou ba nze ente, aha ba le te.
Is there any other persone mit gestreamtai of speciale behuftes wat sprekbeert will eat at us erstanale gelehndet kan bit?
Ba ba na li di ho ba lo di ngutza mele.
Eh, will start, eh, I know I've noted you. Let's start with the, eh, mama there who was, eh...
Eh, arisimuleka mama kua no kua, eh, itla reden harisina, halfe za ho bua, ratla simulara tsa la ka di du lo tedi fa haraha ro na.
And then if there is another one, can we, we see so that we can bring the mike where you are?
Ha ilo kro kona le mongwe yon na li di ho ba lo di ngutza mele, chuleza lezo ho re ho bo ne, re ho romele microphone, ubuwa onze mo onze ente.
Asto no ho pichon is wat wo gebraik mo fa ni microphone, wa it moeilik vint om na vora te ko, as a belief tai fa ons an en ons sol da na i tu bring.
Yes ma, you can start.
Mefra kan ma begin.
Do me lang, ki do me di seba etele di pile barona. Ni witsolaka ke Lavdelia Shudulu. Ki du la mo thirteen eight oh two, Temba Street, Blumanda. Si lo lo sakaki, ma twa di slabs. Ma twa arona a, a, a shifta bikinyan en a barsa. Bo tata le di, le, le, le akaba deba, ba deba aha. Oka na wa bo na kore, le di, le, le di dakaza teyni dia moufa. Ho ze na mezi mo go chone. Ki kha leki na le si lo lo sewa, ho ba ni ma, ma twa arona anua, a tarre ete za di kots. Haw, haw ema kunta, o bo na motoku, ku, ku, haw, haw lo muta hancho, o bo na motoku nte. Thank you.
Thank you ma.
Greetings, eh, to the honoreables. Eh, my name is Lav, Lavdelia Shudung and then I'm live at residence number one three eight oh two in Temba Street. And then my complaint is about the houses that are actually made of slabs. Eh, these houses are not very stable. They are shifting even though they are standing on their foundations and they are continually cracking. The walls are continually cracking. The problem is that even after the building had been completed, eh, they continue to have a leaking roofs. When it's raining, eh, it is a problem of a roof that is leaking. This has been a longstanding complaint that I actually have raised before. So really, the type of the houses that you are living in are very, very dangerous. When you are inside the house, through these cracks, you can actually see people outside. So please help us.
Danki. Ak, kruti amo va di ten wordag is, my name is Lavdelia and I'm in three eight no two Temba street. My question wat ak i wa oper fa ni dag is, di hei se wat mit betonblaya gebau word. Herei hei se is vreslik onstabiou. Di mira krak en di dak lak as it rain. Na ons it alanko herei klahtige oper, ma reets wo da niks, itzda angeduni. So, di krake is so argate mens iemand anna deyri krake kan seen. So ak fra as a belief ver i hope. Bye danki.
Eh, as I've indicated, let me remind that as you come to speak, you should indicate your name, whether you support the bill or you reject the bill.
En kha pe ba haitsu, ho lo ho poza, hao tla ho bua, rekopa koro utcha losa koro kue na mang, aosna koro cha losa tsa, rebulele koro a, o, amochela malaukomo, ho za ochana na lo.
So is wat ek reets angedaiye. As a belief, as i na vora ko mu di i fond se wat i naam is, en ok fonds andai of i ri wetsundwarb onesteen of fera.
Number one, bab.
Number ian manier?
Good morning, protocol observed. I'm Glenn Makubo from Beaconsfield, ward twenty-five. I'm a ward committee in Beaconsfield. It's very unfortunate that we did not get the information from our councillor because our councillor has been listened by our community. And our councillor, when I informed him about this, of, of this, of this bill meeting, he said he doesn't know about it. But nonetheless, this bill is very late for us because already damage has been caused. Our houses are poorly built, especially in Beaconsfield. That is a mining area and we are paying market-related rentals, a bias, bylaws that has been implemented by council and it has not been noted or observed by, by our national government. And that is our problem with it in Beaconsfield. Houses are cracking, ceilings are collapsing, the beams are very, are old and the roofs are flying, flying off. And these are the, the problems with, with our biased council against our community. If we can rectify our council so that they, whenever they do evaluations in our places, they send somebody to come and take a photo, he's standing outside, does not go in, inside the house to go and look how does the, the, the house look inside. And yet, they raise their, their rates and taxes. We are paying market-directed rentals in Beaconsfield, yet it's a mining area. That's how biased our council is. Can that be rectified by a national government? Can government, national government look into it and rectify these things? I think.
Glenn Makubo. Okay. O amochela mil, o ra havi amochela? Glenn Makubo, okay. Thank you Chair, my name is Glenn Makubo. Eh, just from the stats, I don't support the bill. It is too late. A lot of damage has already been done. I am a, eh, a ward councillor. I would like to just report to say that eh, this bill is too late for us because we, we haven't really received it on time. I did inform our councillor about this upcoming meeting of this particular bill and eh, he basically did not take any action eh, to facilitate the situation to make sure that we will be able to be here or he'll be able to here and the people can be able to come and attend this. Now, the problem that we are sitting with here is the houses that are cracking, eh, the poor ceiling, that is a leaking roof. In fact, the roofs are flying off eh, when you have to look at what is happening. I just believe that our councillor is biased. And then when you rectify these councillors, when you come to do some evaluations, we really prefer these houses not to only have photos taken from the outside. Now, the people must actually walk into the inside of them to see exactly what the problem is there. We are sitting with houses like these, but on top of that, we have the rates of, and, and taxes that are very, very exorbitantly, very high. So this has been biased. This is a mining area and yet, this is basically how we are being treated. So I don't accept the bill. The damage has already been done, so it is very too late for us.
Goe dag, my name is Glenn Makubo, I come from Beacons, Beaconsfield af. Ak wa ne te se, herei wetsundwarb is te laa. Di skade is reets gedun. Ak it ons raslet genader, nom ingeligwa ri ri vergadering, ma hai te gen idee gade ri vergadering plas vint ne. Ak woren in a main area, o di area von Beaconsfield. Das verordninge wa di er, di plasstige mini spreytai tingerig is, ma wa di nationale regering vu ek ne van gepasal vi es ne. Herei hei se wa ons woen krak verskraklik. Di balka is ba ya out. As i wind wa, wa di dakka af. Ons raat is partaidag. Kan i ni ons raat ne te omregrak ne? Wana da war das, si gedun word, word iemand eitgesteer, ele neem ene foto van beita af en ons belasting word ne te gehef. So kan i regering as a belief ingreip en kan i as ons belief ons help? Want di belasting en di betaling wat ons daa dun is soe hoi in herei main area. Bye danki.
Eh, there is an old lady at the back who wants to speak there. Can we give a mike?
Ritloho nayasebaka, me mo kolo menguduzi komo ra ho, kora ansa chwailo yaha.
Hello. Go. Juet, oktaun. Ki na juet ruktaun. Ki, ki na ri, me monga ancho ko mele. Barke terma. Kantu udra bonwenaya, ba ta ta, ntuaka. Ntueli niyaka baitsa, a, nayangwa na uzuaka. En a ito ki na li, monga no misimenu, Ela aito kinali yanguano misimenu, yanguano misimenu otsinteng ari te mungo mohonamu. Ken uchwase unchwaka. Yano kona yano kinali mungu unchweli ti, ken uchweli tuhuri. Kizki ya telo unchwaka epi. Yano eli misimenu no obuilo hori e, ki oti oita sa unchwaka, mutanke itoka e si nchho nukasa unchwaka. Yano ilaha anki sa ku, ku pilu hori ki hoho sa ina. Yano kanti kiamu kariwaka si itoka e si yani ki talohaya ka kisa ituri yaha ka yano. Kantu unsa yano talohanya ka eschikile yano kisa majak, kisa majak osainna. Kisa osainna foru unchwaka. Yano kanti unchwaka yani ki batebe ke iti unchwaka, hasi unchwaka.
Are you done, Gok?
Sir Chair, the other lady would like to speak on her behalf because she says that there are missing links when she tries to make a speech. So it will be better if she relates the story for her. Maybe they actually are together.
Okay.
Mna ndugnombula siko anyela ngekama, and you would commit, I say with six, eplumanda. So umama be tetaa apa, sipizi, gomngetisa. Umta te indawaya ke lo mama waanzagale ngonde, so ingondeke i beta iyeka. So inga ke ake lo mama be kadema amsezpein. Kam amsezpein uande uklala lo mama kutufuni, lo mama kapundaanga oki. So lo mama lona wa tata i title didya lo mama, kanti uyoyichinja uti guma, kukima kukino si uyoyenza, blokemi tagasi ne. So wa tu uyomngetisa kuti, ayo oyenza, i title, ito anji, i uko ufula lumutagas, kanti we am signis, we am signis. So ndia benja alona lo mama sidesa ya air housing, sa ya uchongi title didi gobikula mama kuti, history sa ke sa ya koto, kasi ya koto nse uchongi kuti. Statement sitini ku zenjani indaw i chinchale kutzebe. Koba lo mama gayas kuti zenjani chinchale kutzebe, uyazje na ben, lo mama ben mngetzuk signela kuti akwazupman intijend. So kango kuwa benja alonlontya lo mama ibhunku, koba abantu ba tata indaw yake. Banfakela ubuudingo ba bama ne ben kela kutuzo upuma ufani nitozi jalo. So the case le sidega kasi ya costabatde, this is a fraud. So fanegele si lo mama ambayenzi case, si nze i case a police station e potam. So low case le bitatwe lipu, so lo mnungu lo itega veloka band, wazo fakela lo mama uunzi makbaguti. Uta te i fifty thou ya bandu, sa kubukui tata utinda ufuninda akpeka, butu butu bakunike fifty thou. And then ndia buza umama omdalaga ngak, unamnikanjani fifty thou, je ehlanze mkuu kobo ngonina. So abukoba, abukoba ngonina, and then sa ambas, as of since a intijend. Kasi fika kuwa napaa, asos tol sokba kutu umama uni ke fifty thou. Isis tol sokba umama utone tengen, and umama unaba unomdanawake, andanakuse khauti. So kango ndango, oko se ambas fakela low case, i case aykwa ikumbi. And a two years back, lo mama ehlenenda uni enga yasutu kuti, isenge yake, okanya yo yake. Let's try the neti kutimteutusnaytisa apunga lo mama, kobe yasukule.
Thank you ma, thank you very much.
Hi, I am Nomvulas Konya, in ward six. We are here asking for help because this old lady is mentally disturbed. I took her to the pension for her to get money. And there's another lady that was there and she was trying to assist her signing the papers. Apparently she defrauded her by changing her title deed to her name. So now we are fighting, we went to court. We went, first we went to housing and then we went to court disputing why the name in the title deed is no longer the old lady's name, now it's this lady's name. So it is painful because they are taking her place, telling her that maybe after some time she will move out because the house is no longer in her name. So we are really here asking for assistance, that you would really help us so that we'll be able to settle this, the old lady can get the house back. She has a child in Joburg, but she really needs assistance, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will write it and then we'll, we'll see how we, we deal with it. Thank you very much for that information. Let's go back to our line.
Aki dumesema lukua parlamente, ma dibuli sama lunga parlamente. Buli se no speaker is councillor, the ward seventeen. Mna ndugnosipo ngwenya. Dihlala, e ward seventeen ekutwano. E one five six seven zero, Pierce Street. Ya isapo ta into yokoke wakwesinku. Koba singa bandu songe singonela, obama sibenga pakati wesinku. But in the question, oba. Ezizinjuzo kiwe yo, sina matanda. Ziwayo istena zaizozzi bros. Itakizazo ziyavusa, ende ziyapapa tegano moya. Uzako nswanjani ngazo, ende nini ez e ward committee in the consent. Gaba, gabashali. Oba izinjuze tu, zo kiwe pati. Azisonelis, azisonelis was izinjuze itu, aziko in good standing. Ezinye, payin vuda ine tilayo apa eflurin, amanze ayaporela pakati. And ezinye iflurizazo, ziyabarsanazo pakati. So is not in good standing. Ngogo ngubuzo amkuba, aziza ulungswanini njani. Because ezinye ayon bo nonulungswanet, kutoa ita pacha paya na paya. Zinzin ju esu funa ukritu asituka le from the start, in the foundation. Ingak esina yoke ward seventeen ile yo. And I don't think it's only ward seventeen, I think it's a whole Kimberley, whole Kalish where you have a problem of the houses. Because the contractors ze tu asizakela yo, azisakela obama sonelise, they benefit only the money. Then the live deck, they esenyi, si alfinist house, dahingiga lebo.
Thank you ma. Those unfinished houses, hello, those unfinished houses, go and register them there.
Greetings to the parliamentarians, my name is Nusipongweni, in ward seventeen, in good wano. I support the bill, but I have a question about the houses that are cracking. Also there are bricks that are falling, and as a ward committee, I am really concerned. We are now, we are not satisfied at all with the work that is done there, because when it rains, water comes in, and some houses are not finished. I think maybe they need to be destroyed and be rebuilt again. So I just come and asking for assistance from you, that you will really get into this matter, thank you.
My name is Nusipongweni, ak bly in Pierce Street, and ak kom van waik seventeen af. Ak wana te say ak ondersteen niwetsundwar, ma ak vo grau e mu ti andag drai na di heise wat onos aria gebau wo. Yiri heise krak verskraklik, di bakstene fall aid, ons is niegelikig miti type work wat i gedun wo ni. Wane rdi reen lak ons heise verskraklik, da saus a par onvotoide heise. And ak wonder if us talk ni mani daheise, mu ten mit plats krappin van voraf begini, so ak so i hope war de, bye danki.
Re, le, re leka kiti sabo tata lona jorona fanofaka ha, ma lona arna moho ne ana ngli, asarokoso fasengho chilalele, le faranze rencha di ngongo rehoza ronaka one. A ilohora ana le marulelo, ana li dipacha, marulelo a ana ngli dipacha, zidi zenyame zifabula e na. To ta libo tata joripota, to ta jorinre, re dikhala hori, li di tena za ting dia kwecha, hadiya iti ze pe la. Re, inale ma tata a, a chonali, amangafarloha ne, a ilokala renzeratla kisa, ho tlalo sa hori. Re kopa dinke zenu zedi diro hori, dinne za bo lingjo bo twanitindjo, ne re libeliso re, innen jono ho tlalo fala musimolo ho. Ki ngongo reho, lebo tata jorubu kisa mfa pe le kalona, re kopa tuiso ga jor.
Dumela mbaytela ripile ba me. Le ba tubo te ba ba reporta potili. Na ki, kilabu kileneli jo ekas, izwaku ward six. Na re na le bo tata bobu, re sethopasa ba tu ku ward six. Ho tlato kela kokutimokuwa nokuwa, ba ba ngwe ba ro na, re mo nguo isengwa ro na. Re, aheju, modi du lo nte isinta ro na. Re na le ma tata akutuha na ku etelele, ki hobola hori mo yare ngai etile. Honale sethopasa ma ina sesi ju le modi fa. Ba tu bawa ba tu tuwe ba isua kuali kwa. Le janu ba tu bawa basanze basa itu hori ntlaki. Na ki kopa tu shua ela hori ba hai shu, re tu se ba tu ba ridutin hawa. Ta hori ba ba ngwe ba ro na basiti ba ilebu ya ba tu, basanze ba chere le shuleka ma boho. Ba na ba ba ne ba karakadiwa kanaku ye. Honale ba tu ba ba du la mbona, ne ba du le tuwe mi bu var. Ro na ridula di ngonaha, re ri tuhala yaka ri tu eti yana, ridutimi bu ya ba tu ba ba ngwe. Ho kana yana yaka riduti, re sethopasa ba tu ba ba utu lembu tu. So re kopa tu shu ba hai shu, ya hori, hai ilohori sapsediki yaha, mombu ngua, kodiro yama. Ka hori sesi salanki hori mbu hai shu ahah.
Winso walon.
Ma?
Who gave you the, who gave you the, the, the houses in an area where it doesn't belong to you?
Kama zamang, e, ki mangyo lo neiling, o dirilohora lo ahe, lo ne monkung e lo hori, imo mu isengwa lona.
Ki, ki, hakitla ki na lili ina lamoto ali esi. Ka hori ne ba tu ba, banti ba ro loha na, ho ta omongo, ho ta omongo, ho ta ho omongo. Di ngonaha terita milen katu, oni esale ronaba angritimuluwa lamombu nyeli. Ro na ba ba angritimuluwa tele, gurumanda ele, dia konduza brandi tedi wo di.
Ah ma. Ah ma.
Okay ma.
No, ma, you know that you are staying in somebody's plot. And you don't want to tell us who gave you the permission to stay in that plot. You want our assistance, how do we help you?
Mama we, seri batangutusua kesu kashon ya. Ki ho re, kana kungu ra putu yaka ri putilo yana, rekreasiya thoko sewa, se ribuan de shone. Se, se ri chere sin, hari ya kudi ofisi, ho ba ba tu le barire raya se barire ilen shone. So re kopa hori, ri tu siwe.
Ru tu sa via. Ru tu sa via mama, uha naworbojor, ki mangao beile mon, mo jarate singya hao. Ri tu se le unar, re feli na lamuto.
Mama yaka akibuwa, akere councilarata ronan zidi dipala ma dipacholo. Akere. So ba tu ba, ntlaba ba repete nte mo mi bu, haritoli re ba kiri momba boho. So na yo kibuwa inkeleha, ki apply iti title didya lharab. Hakitla, hakitla ho noko talohanya hori, sidu yama ka hori, motu yo beile ngawa, hori atuse ba tu. Otsanze hori, aritu se ka hori kadi. Ho skakanali yo tusiwa yana, yo tusiwa yana. Re kopa hori, yaka, ma, spuko yemputi ze, ika re mpatli. Ka hori, hai lo hori mi buwa ri peile, karate ngwa moa. Ho kaba, ho skakanali ba tu ba, ba, ma ina ba one, a tlakele timoku ranting, ho ti ba ho tu siwa, ka mi buwa, raho latela na ri tu siwa. Janu, ka hori hari iti ba tu bawa, re ba ta ho iti ba tu ba re ri tu siwa, re kopa tu shu choi choi.
Translate ma.
Bandu thokata riya bo la ba tu ba, na barnero sentu balumi ni pe.
Okay, ofidit ma, ofidit.
Aho, aho na ngongo.
E ne kero osa zo fedit, okune za kanya ka.
E kibuli za kanya ka.
Okay ma.
Ki kari ki abela e.
Okay. Alright, my name is Kilabu Kila from ward six. And then, in a place where we live, we are actually a group, quite a group of women and other people in ward six. Now, the problem is that most of us actually live in the land that does not belong to us. And this has been a longstanding problem. There was a time when a certain group were mentioned by names in a newspaper, and it was mentioned that they were going to be helped in a certain way, because obviously our problem is being known. But now what has happened from time to time is that people have been moved from place to place. So because of this very problem that we have, of being on the land that does not belong to us, we are asking for help. There are some who actually lived just like us, who have already died, and it is their children who are actually grappling with this problem until today. The problem that hasn't been solved. It has been for so many years that we live in this particular land that was not ours. So now, one of the questions that I have is that if your house is a subsidized one, what really must happen when you live in that particular house, but in the land that does not belong to you? And then mentioned is made by the woman that the problem of us not receiving the help we are seeking for is that there is one councillor after another, they keep on changing. Now, when you receive some news as to how your help is going to be solved, when you meet a new man, a new councillor, you get a different story. The problem continues unabated. So that is the problem in a nutshell that we are sitting with here.
Pria mora, my name is Kilabu Kila, and ak kom van af waik seis. Ak isye ni kvi ni wodige grup menze, mestal frauens, ons won opa stik grond wat ni na ons bewort ni. Dos rees na ana grupa verwiis, and in the Quran is it ok genume, wat yiri is a bekendese chausi. But I kero hori vani menze verschuif ma, ons hope wat onswo frau is, kan i asim ons menze help onfons dailikhai te ge. Vanos rees menze waral gewonet wat gestaafet, and halekiner sitna miti problem, yiri problem is al baiank ani gang. Now wat geberet, onswo weet wat kan geber, as the menze na heis blae wat gesubsidier is, op grond wat ni anja bewort ni. The problem with ons erfor is that di ratsler is so baian for anna, at ons ni weet wat anga ni. Wane rdi niwe ratsler inkom, dan, dan is iti niwe story ve van voraf, bye danki.
Thank you very much, let's remind that we are talking about the bill. Malau kaka nwa. That we want your input so that we can strengthen the, the bill on. We are not saying don't raise your challenges, but if you come here and raise the challenges, when we ask you question, you can't respond, you don't expect us to follow on those issues because we are not dealing with spooko ourselves. We want to deal with people that has names so that we can follow them up. So if you are hiding those people, it's your own problem, we are not going to entertain those issues. Because councillors comes and go, but they've got names.
Re, re lo kopuze ma kaisa hori rabata, rubuafanofaka molau komo, hoza molau kaka ngawa ro na. Ha ilohora lonali ma tata amango alo atalo san, ra ready ze berolo botadi pocho. Honger bata mayina abatu, belosa ne lidika rabo, ra ta hona honu tu sa jang. Ba tu ba ilohora lonali ma tata kabone, hasidi puko ba tu ba, ki ba tu ba na le mayina, kajalo re ne mayina. Halu sa re ne mayina, karaka kera hona hona latela la ba tata jualuna. Ende haritla hori sa ma tata a ilohora, halu amani mayina abatu moho one, ka hori karaka kera hona honu tu sa katsala, epa halu dira jalo. Kajalo re ne mayina abatu, haro botadi pocho, arabe hori honu honu tu sa.
Onso inetweyans harinner, onsesi omi insal te krai an gande di wetsundwar. Onsese ni dat ons ni i ander kesi sona luister ni, ma onsfradet i sol fukis da op so that onsiri wetsundwar kan verstark. And onsfr, ditap okni i kom here in, and onsfr fui i frau, and i kan i di frau antwort ni. I kan i menze waag sek in waag la, wat waag krap achtele ni. Ya ratsler komen han, ma, ale it nogst yet senom, i weet vi ale is.
If you are afraid of victimization, please go to the table and give those people the names. Those people will not tell that person that you have given us the names, but we were going to follow up with the person.
Ha ilohora honu lo na, lo na, lonali cha bo ebe iri lo hori ta thora katsala esasi ama. Lonali mayina abatu, kamo ta folen eno e, luiklu buisa nelebo, relebo me ba ba fanofalo ba ne mayina aw. Ro na karako bolela, motu yo, hori lo ntsize mayina abone fa, hasese re klengo sedira, me re klo hona latela lakha ni ew.
As i bang is dat i dalk fuktemi seer gan wo, ganase brief na di ondersteeningsparce neal, and geef ale di inlichting. Ale sol ni fori di peshuin se, dit kom van i af ni, ale sol dan di kontak norige kontak mak, omi di chausi rahte stal.
Or we'll send members of the committee to you, give them the details. If you don't give the details, you must know that we are not going to follow it up. But if you give us the lead, we'll then be able to follow up and resolve the matter.
Re klo horo melama ho bangobala na baba ntsenjalo ho ngwe, emaluka akomi tiaro na. Haba ta moho lo na, re kopa hori lo ba neye, din kaka butalo, din kaka butalo, all the details. Halu sa dinse, luska la libela hori ta hona honu tu sa.
Onso saus infeni lere vani komite na i tu sti, ma i mu tvele di besonderi regie. As i ni vili besonderi regie ni, kan ons ni opvolg in probiru omi di chausi opte los ni.
Proceed ma.
Okatwa le landate.
Amafu.
Nakali na ki nakahijo elvesumpona, ki jamo ward six, moblumanda. Se ritlo si bua nga, kilabu kela, tirisanamohi tyananting. Namoo, kudlaa bua kadinka, molau teo olinte, hakika ta na lo, molau teo usi ami. Me ela silo se se tenke chwa pocho mo, pusho nyaro na because of, ika re ba hi ra ela ba tu. Hakita kita hori, rakiri kona ku, ah, bikiohota, bikiohok, kikoora, kikoona kontrakoro ah. Ma, sekisana kina kana pe la, kikoona kontrakoro ah. Pleke chwanze sabi we pele, so that if ilohori, unchwe kata kwa anakabota, ki biti tori kiya ka. So pusho ya ro na inti the subsidies or matuaro na ta kwa akiva. At the end of the day, ota okre, ilohori, after so five years, unchwe simulei barsa, simulei kareya buwa mombu. So sa ra hori, pleke oha yasa biwa sin. Ta babo bedi, ota okre lo unchwe ya akivu, anto e ita kwa akiva. Ho ta onali di changes. Kisa po ta mo nza ema bua ka, matu a, okre ilo ru gua mo pleke nyamoto. Ma ra u gua mo pleke nyamoto, honale ba tu ba ba ngu baylor ba du sika, ka 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 bobo ne moa. Ma ra honale ba tu ba ngu baylor ba du mo pleke, akoni to agreement, e di gua kopi loa yare. Ki na le bo tata yo le nakaki emya, ma ra na bo tata jua ke na le, dipampilite ri jo odisha na le moton na napleke ko, 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 ko di loa yare. So pleke ilai na, ensanze lidishendi, so na kwa e lidishendi, bua di lo ta bo nineteen ninety five. So unchweaka, eto ho akua ka subsidy ami, so ata ho shebisa tol se, ki tol se pe di. Title didi ya moton nele mbu, unchweki ami, ende nto hori, aku mo pleke ni ew, is because of agreement tera agrile mo dipampilte adi nele. So olofa sade mu toha, jo ko, ufula ta hori kisa unchwe, because of, ata hori title didi ya ah. So ba tata eke bata uchuro borara bo loa ya. On top of that, ho ta hapi o mungu abu bedi. Ota horo rurikilin, o anton dele rurikilin toka han, ka han rata. Kinikinali, eviction documente, unfortunately ta ja takato. So kange be ya ku koto, kange jilu ku koto, aska ta ma apiru mu koto, ho ta onsa, silo saa ku koto. Last month, te belo honali o mungu abu bedi we, ta otan taro akhi, hori kilitin toka hundred and fifty thou. Na ki wili yavon samai na one because ki ilaka ela te zita tabi, ka ela sa ki kereba tuwa bu ti, ka be ka hoderaketi. So neke bata, pocho e ngueke lo ke bata ho itwa, ke bata ho itwa koxa pocho, because of matu ahu neke koxa. Koxa ilai yaha ma, yaha akila koni tutampilite, ma reano, haba taba tamata pa haku batahu itu hori. A, dipampilite ya ka nire pleke, oka esu de ba hona hori, pizza ba ta hori, ba ta ho talohanya story. Ki laka inama ta, kaya ko, 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 ko mata, muelor gi laka bata, neneyaroa mata. Oba mitang se mu tele si. Mu tele siyo, ilaki sanskeri ka bua le, neke mokra duji. So ilaki shangi kopan lena, kana ba tata hori ke kopan ele e. So e belor unchibela ka, sek, ka sekretaria hori, data type star ah, ra ela sa ru tuana kamho. Ka ela sa ika ta ma ka hoderaketi ko, kalisu police station, muelor hori le yano sanseri buta. Neke bata ho ituro buta jo, borara bo loa e, because of, na gidisuspecte sa ka, zedi rikile ma. Ende na ina, expli, ina, ki na konse no hori, if ilohori kiya, ke frote because of media, a koxa akineka, ki ma, ki ma dia governmenti. So ye bata ho ituro kobe ribuanga tabenzi ya. Kilabu.
Thank you very much Chair Hassan.
My name is Mister Kahiso, say name. Elvis. M P O N A, Mboni Mister Kahiso Mboni. I'm from ward six. And then right from here in the city of Tairmani. Thanks very much for the wonderful cooperation that we have between ourselves and US Parliament. And then we are very, very grateful. I do support the bill Chairperson. The bill is very, very good. But I just want to point out to some of the mistakes which I feel have been committed by the government. When it comes to home building, it looks like the government just employs anyone. And then sometimes what happens is that they don't first of all do some land survey before they build a house. The government builds some subsidized house or the homes. And what happens is that in no time, because these houses are being built by just anyone who doesn't seem to have been screened. They start cracking in no time. And this is an indication that we have houses that have been built of a substandard quality. Now, the second point that I would like to mention is that during the process of the building of the houses, there came to be so many, many changes. What happens is that you have a house built on someone's land, which is a problem in ward six. And then you find that that's what happens. And then there are some people who have had houses built on a certain land where they placed themselves, which was not actually allocated to them. And this causes a lot of problems. And in my case, my house was built on some on the land that has got a different landowner. But there was some agreement that was actually put down in writing from some of the offices of the lawyers. So now, how does this happen? How do we solve this problem? Because that's exactly the situation that I'm in right now. And this happened around the year nineteen ninety five. Now, here comes the problem. When you find yourself in a situation like this, you find that the title deed is going to belong to a landowner. Yet, the house is mine. And this gave birth to so many, many problems. Because in no time, somebody came. He wanted to sell my house. Because he's the one who actually is now the owner of the title deed. So it complicates the situation. This person, and there is another person who arrived at some point and he said to me that he actually bought my house for hundred and fifty thousand renz. I went to the court of law and to South African police services to open the case. Now, I want to point out that Goksta is in error here. Because they are the ones who build these houses. And we are having a problem as to what belongs to who when it comes to these cases of these properties. All right, and then. At some point, when I was trying to follow up on the solution of this problem, I wanted to actually meet up with a manager who obviously was overseeing this whole project. It was so difficult to meet up with this particular manager. And then I was actually directed to meet up with his secretary. And then the secretary and I could not reach any agreement. And I opened the case again. Because I'm very, very concerned with the actions that have been committed by Goksta here. Building houses on other people's lands. And we are losing a lot of money in that regard. Thank you Chairperson.
Gueimore, my name is Kahison Mboni en ek kom vanaf wijk zes. Ek vul ie se baaidanki dat ie is en danki dat ons somit ie kan werk. Erstens ondersteun actie weetzond werk bijvoor ons. Maar ek vul groep paar fouten van die regieringsse kant af anwees. Hiervanie probleeme is dat like my as die regering huisel at bou kan genege jantrappen zijn maat net kom maakbige huisel bou. Die grond dat die onderstukke wat gedoe nie wordt nie. Die huisel wat gebouw wordt krak verschrikkelijk. Dit wijf voor ons aan dat het sipstandart huisel is wat voor ons gegeen word. Dat is baai voor andere ne wat plasment van de huisel gebouw word. En zelfs is daar huisel wat op ander mensen's grond gebouw word. Dat is zelfs mensen wat kies wale huisel wil bou. En dat is werkelijk baai baai probleeme. Mijn huis persoonlijk is op iemand anders grond gebouw. Ek het ook schriftelijke tussenhof erkennen daarvan en wat die prokureer angestier is. Hierheet alles in 1995 gebeur. Nou, die titleakte word aan die grond einar gegeen. Maar die huis bewoord aan mij. Iemand ie dal angekom en wou mijn huis verkoopt. Die volgende persoon dat angekom en gezet het mijn huis voor honderd en vijftig dais naar hand angekoop. Ek het de zak bij die isopje die opgemaak, maar is koksa ses kalt. En nou, to ek het proberen opvolgen, ek proberen bestierder krij. En ons konie bij mekaar uitkom nie toek met die secretaris ontmut. Ons seet proberen om mekaar te vind, ons konie en ek het weer een zak opgemaak. Ek vro omie hoop oor alie hierdie probleeme wat ons onderfint. Baaidankie.
Next.
Kenam posse kor. Kijwa wedsiks blumanda. Guesionis tret. Na kenali botata nyan. Arsantra elakini kireki sapotan. Milaw. Sapotan elintelele bulale lakahayon. Na kenali botata. Banto ewo. Ek idu la moho yonaya blumanda. Since batsin se paving. Kea metsi asimulula pulayina metsi atlalakan. Atsena nas tlalapeli mujarating. So kipikia councilorinko masithol. En ya bantu melala loritza mbu. Mbu butselan mujarating. Kea yanu ketehunavos. Me eti atsena street atsena montu. Ufula bona ochocha mumusho. Obopakulo ka bete akahoe ebuthitu. Ochata mu metsi kana bapalwa kiko ya skolu. Ebuthoku.
Askisma.
Kenat trapped butingha jarata ewa. Hake tjuhutwalili foto kichutse kenali proof. Kisele lo sakase situnasiwa. Isali warbata ankachelan klo eliyanu. Kisanze ke baxi. Kuchitabu tata wu duwisteko the current councillor. Abarukan tutsas wu kisanze ke baxi tsindikabona ka enemaru. Anusetse alimunza. Ke aliwu.
Thank you ma. Go and register there on the at the table.
Thank you Chairperson. My name is Mposseko from ward six. I want to stay begin by saying that I really do support the bill which you have been discussing with us. We appreciate it. And then the problem that I have is about the house, the house which I live in. Since they did paving in my yard, that particular paving hasn't actually borne any results because there is a lot of water, storm water that actually come into my yard and it gets right straight into the house itself. When this problem began, I told my councillor and then he sent loads of trucks literally to come and dump soil inside my yard so as to try and alleviate this problem. This happened, but to no avail. I still have a lot of water coming into my house. Sometimes you find that it's been raining and when I have to get off the bed in the morning, I literally come from off the bed and put my legs and feet into the water inside the house. From my warm bed into this very icy cold water. So it's more like I'm trapped in my yard. So this is the big problem. And then it really makes me cry. That's how my house was built in the particular place where it is standing. It's been a longstanding problem and it continues. I just wanted to report that Chairperson, that this is the problem that I'm sitting with. Thank you.
Kenaa juti Jafta from ward four. Mofer hanoch, wetaka councillor Bobape, mopime. Renale botat kama taruna mopime, ke matu antla ale, ke matala kale aferrhanoch. Matu aruna apanyehile mashwe. Awile lidida, kaukoni luhuru ukadisama kubankanya dak. Or oreka samenda obankain. Since two thousand and eight. Bato ba masipala batse batlaba kata di foto, barava katuku tuwaba bankain. Lidi fluuru dipanyehile. Karri isuku dirasepe mo matung aruna salile ngipansi barai akets. Barabatlat labatlat. Kita bukhile. Masipala karri kesetse no. Number two. Di erf nummer taruna di registration number taruna. Di wrong. Kijwa mataloko remutelisi. Abantari kudira avidavid. Rekrestrata shote. Rito kudira di avidavidi. Karu kono kura di title deed because of wrong registration. Kijwa loko master marekwa. Ay salan taru otara noele akualile kual. Or kisale kualulewa ke ausinkalo ne kubonakor kani tarikrareto authority. En matu aridunkeke duu moho yoné kahonabatsadi. Mama le papa batokaits. En haribereki bariblokela motlakas. So kipuruzo kura yoná, aluriblokela motlakas, lara kupa talaya kos haribereki. Number three. Retuari lebotat di noha di zera momatung aruna ke tamoa pele harunale. So asapli friko patusho. Remoma tatengale ridu lalibana. Lea pulayina harituko zera modi toiletele modi jarating ke matat. So badula batse barai aketsa. Batlaba kuka ta di foto. Baduzika di foto modi phone unza bone. Ha ba dirusepe kabo tata bo. So friko patusho.
Thank you ma.
Thank you Chairperson. My name is Jafta. From ward four. In in Bobape. We live in the houses that actually are very old houses that were in ferhanoch. Now, these houses are cracking all the time, Chairperson. They are collapsing. Even if you try to use the cement to patch things, it just doesn't work. The municipality, even actually even the floors themselves are cracking. So the municipality, people from the municipality have been coming from time to time, taking photos of the problem. Even on the floor that is cracking. They keep on saying that they're going to come to sort out the problem. But they actually never came back. That is my first problem. Problem number two. The registration numbers that we have are actually wrong. We tried to take some measures to have these rectified and corrected. Obviously, we had to do some avidavid. We don't have, we don't have any title deeds. And then I spoke to Mister Marekwa, who gave me a letter that I had to take to one of the offices in Khanesa for this problem to be attended to. But nothing has happened. In fact, the house in which we live, it was the house of my parents who are now late. We are not working. We owe electricity and they expect us to pay, but now we are unemployed. So how can we be able to even pay for that? Problem number three, we've got snakes literally that are coming into our houses. Because in front of our houses, we've got a bushy area. So this is where they come from. And when it's raining heavily, we are not even able to go into our toilet or into the yard itself. We are sitting with a serious problem. We've been lied to. Lied to by the people from the municipality. Who kept on coming from time to time, taking photos, saying that help is coming, but there is no help. Please help. Thank you Chairperson.
Kenaa renale di probleme sedi ins. Na kenaa ozilda ngobisa. Ozilda ozilda ngobisa. Kenaa hilda ngobisa. Kana renale di probleme sedi sirasuku di akatlo. Maspaleti. Kita simulapeli number one. Retua brack location falrafiruko batlu west. Saleritense ka twenty fourteen. Ka two thousand and fourteen. Kea renale di claim zalat. Ha renale di claimi zalat. Kea rensa di ten ranta. Bomani erbosmane ka batlamu kimbalimo batlaku tinyadilosaruna. Molent claimimo. Ha isi ha isirosa merikreka rabo. Ha nakaki rataku sama yakakiya. Kana molent claimimo. Ke ba bosare asiras bomani erbosmane ba tinsedi claimi zaruna. Babantata claimi barare eh. Kesa two thousand and twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen. So fa barare isi di bulel. Kanakua hana ke. En elika two thousand and six. Anu two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Kea kea two thousand and twenty one. Ha pe kea nuri noka two thousand and twenty one. Kea ba uduka. Barare ba uduka la hawalia. Kotlasekwa. Kea ba ba bantabar ba uduka la tingmar. Ha isi basame ba. Ba si actionele. Boane batova nabare tabo kela. So fa. Kua ko braking di akatlo. Eh pleke laruna bash di mabitlaruna. Kea be ira kore di la akrafa di hudiwe bakolo baruna. Ha ke boza. Waema ke kileka isala marapababa twaruna. Hale. Momoplasticking. Ya tensemas. Mo falbos. Kiwa no komola pomfara fir. Ke boza kura yoná, hale tla kua epaha. Lele kela jukema. Barare batwa kuma spala, maspa la. Ke oné ba nilongore ba. Marta manetiri chongale. Ha isirosa meri benefit muho soné. Kukala tel now. Bana batama bakreita manetiri na isirosa meri. Ba klemu horuna ilake buakama bitlaro yoná, marapo ayriwa. Ha isi basame ba si. Ba bone plane. Lau kaya ko falrafiri ko brack location. Lelela, letlamsara. Ke rweyran tamsara insel pleke longwela. Le tla, le tla kua bona loane a epule mabitlaruna. Kirikuti kuti zamati kiri. Ha dia chualwa. Marha isirosa meri benefit, kelela ha isirosa meri benefit. Ha konsoko tima di madi. Baba bana bakra pasalamanduni tri. Baba on. Rona isi ilaba ha isirosa merikrein. Next, fan batzadi baruna batokaits. Lorna rifula kona rebela bakolo baruna match. Ha isirosa me ba klemu horuna ka two thousand and fourteen. So fa. Len zalakha nyemo raho. Mani erbosman. Ha pe kela ken number two yoná. Ha ta kela. Kenaku new stance. New stance seko kenan teng di foto za za teng kizeri treti. Cancelara di cancelara taruna. Ka ka two thousand and one. Senza kea kopa la. Kea kubankay bo poljamor. Bomani erpoljamor bomani erkoboka. Kea ba bankanya kona kuku new stance. Ba ba bantse ba pluha ba. Mar rnera hela leza survivor. En echua captain. En eerela replake ele efese. Markale bakala kore bone ka ba habile madi. Kea ba bayra roko akiweko. So fa kea abarari matuale after ten years. Atle kusang karuna. No, sisi dira kala. Matu aruna. Di temeshi za mombuakwa. Ke sere tsuwa kuchaara. Matu aruna. Atala metsi. Hari pulaydi. Rowari yoná, ke selim. Hari pulaydi kla hon. Metsi atala modi jarating. Rebela ha bana kuto amodi. Adukulu ka di jarata ke falrafir. Rebereta bana raho baba kotirpateng. Kuto amodi jarating en keki distance. So fa. Di toilet, kunale matuas nandi toilet ya. Kunale matuas nandi toilet. Akiri yoná, no chonsa renawe akiri kichonaga ribue.
Thank you, thank you ma. I've agreed to three minutes. Other things that you still have, go and register them there. Thank you very much. Go there ma. Go and register them there.
Thank you Chairperson. My name is Hilda Ngobisa. That is my name. One of the problems that I wanted to mention here is that since the year twenty fourteen, we actually put some claims for the land. And then when we had done that, a few of us, then we were then we were told that we must give out an amount of ten rents to Minier Bosman, who was here in Kimbalim. And then later on, we followed up on this and then asked as to, did Minier Bosman actually hand it in our claims? And then we came to realize that this has, doesn't seem to have been done. And that, that was still around the year twenty fourteen, so we still have this problem to be attended to. So in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty, and in twenty twenty one, we kept on trying our level best to make a follow-up on this. While we're still doing this, people were then moved away to some other place, I don't know where, but no action had been taken with regard to the land claims that we did. And this was in Di Kato. Now, one of the biggest problem that just happened with regard to land is that the cemetery that is nearby our place had been disturbed. In no time, we saw bones of the dead exposed. Some of them being put into some plastics, and we wondered, what is going on here? Why is this? Why are they digging within this particular cemetery? And then, people who were doing this told us that we had been sent here by the municipality to do this particular job. They were working this land the way they were, but now it disturbed us a lot. We were, we didn't know exactly what was happening. And then in the year twenty twenty three, while we're still trying to make a follow-up on this, you know, this has taken so long that even some of the people who were with us have had their parents died while they were still trying to make a follow-up on this problem. The councilors, since twenty, since two thousand and one, that way back long, have not helped with anything. But from time to time, we see land developments taking place. Our money is being taken away from us. Now where we are, in the place where we, 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 we are actually residing, it is only a matter of time that our houses are going to sink in with us. They've been standing there for a period of about ten years, and the land is of no use. There is a lot of damage that has happened. Literally, our yards are muddy. If you put your feet into this mud, they actually grab hold of you, you can't walk, you can't move. That's how serious the problem is. On a rainy day, you can't really walk around, you can't do anything. So all around the house, it's just muddy, the land is not beautifully developed. I mean, even the, the places where the toilets are standing. So we have a very serious problem with people we tried to work the land issue with, but there is no help. But thank you Chairperson, I think these are some of the many problems that we have that I wanted to relate.
Thank you, next.
Thank you very much, my name is Simon Ungoi, I'm from Jankemdorpe. I support the bill, even though it came so late, even the damage has already been done. So I believe it will help the, the coming, the coming up generations. In Jankemdorpe, we are facing a huge problem when it comes to subsidy houses. We have, I think, plus minus three hundred, three hundred unfinished housing. Our community just sent me here to just to, to raise up this issue that they have the Jankemdorpe Pokwan Local Municipality. We have many of them, many of those are R P houses. It's not been built up. Konale kilosenongore, bakulbaro ba di applyezi, have been applied. So, but di aprofiile, ba trasi vidi aki, they've been not been built up. So I even bring some example of that subsidy verification here on me. So I think that's, that's the only issue that we can raise from Jankemdorpe Pokwan Municipality, thank you very much.
Li na kana keman?
Simon Ungoi.
Simon Ungoi?
Yeah, Ungoi.
Jankemdorpe?
Okay, thank you. Thank you Chairperson, my name is Simon Ungoi from Jankemdorpe. We supported the bill Chairperson. And then, we love the bill because we came to realize that this bill is going to be very helpful even to the generations to come. The huge problem that we want to relate here is about the subsidized houses. We've got about three hundred unfinished homes in our area. So the community from Jankemdorpe is here, we thought you should come here to raise this problem. We did raise this problem with the local municipality, but it is still continuing. And then in Zona, he made mention of the fact that the parents, some of our parents applied for the houses, they were approved, but have not yet been built. So this is the problem that we have, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Chairperson, I apologize profusely, let me repeat this in Zona. I'm just thinking in English this morning, sorry about that. Okay, if you allow me Chairperson, alright. So, li la laka ke Simon Ungoi, ke swako Jankemdorpe. Me, ke batlaku du, khalosafana fa kore, re amukela, molakomu onu kalaba kalahora, radume la kora, molakomu onu, utlehu tu sali, di kokomane si di salzaning, di kase di ku pele harona. But tatabo buhulu bur na lebo, ne ke matlo aile kora, a subsidize we. Renale matlo akanan three hundred ta aile kore. Ha isi afel hasela asimula kua ahiwa. So maluku arona asuchaba kota ko Jankemdorpe, atli, atingfano, atli lora na, kota kobeha bu tatabo ne fa pele kaha koe, modula stulo. Ri le rabo romela bu tatabo ne bo, gohun masipala wasale kaya, molifilo larona. Me harisiru bo ni tu so epa, kota kufikla kone jano njana. Ba, we ba ba thadi barona, ba kileba applyela matlo, matlo aile a, amukela seha, aprofiha kora, ahiwe. Milianu yana satanare eme zo kua ahiwa kawona. Me re lebele zo kora tatabo na tu so kota mohue na, kabo tatabo no, kala koro modula stulo. Thank you, Chairperson, you are greeted with your committee. We do, I do agree with the bill. I also agree with the people who say that the bill is a bit late. Mostly is not, I want to start with, with implementations when regards to the, to, to, to the bill. I think, the reason why we're saying it's too late is because of, we, we do not get a chance to engage with people on the ground who this bill is going to affect them mostly. And I think, I believe this is the first gathering and calling in the Northern Cape where we have this induction of this bill. But I think we must more invest mostly because of, we, we have a lot of problems when it comes to, to housing. We have problems where even the elders cannot make it to the municipalities. There was houses built in, 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 in Leratong Park, in, in, in Roodepan. Those houses were not correctly built, now they have to renovate it. It is a waste of money in the first place. Can't we have a procedure where we have the tenders, people who are doing the tenders? And the whole processes, that it can reach the national before it can be approved for tenders to take place or for people to build houses in certain places? So that we can make sure that when we build these houses, that we are correct and we know that we, we, we are doing the right thing. Because then we would not have to waste money where we have to re-renovate houses that has already been built for our people. And the second thing again is that the development, we have much less developments. And, and I think the procedures are much slower, slower with, with developments in regards to our, our communities. Can't we have, like I said, can't we have a procedure where we use, utilize this money and, 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 and invest in employing, I see we speak about employment also here in the bill? Where we can employ people, ground soldiers, to go and do door-to-doors? To be able to, to, to see all these problems that are taking place in our community? Because if you send someone to go do door-to-door, the person will already cover the cracks. The person will already cover the cracks of the house and how the situation is at the house. Number two, the person will have already covered the, the body indigent and say, this is the problem, this lady has got a problem for indigency. And, and even so, with the indigency, I think with the municipal, we, we, we have a process where, where our people will be sent from pillar to post. You must go, if you, if you want to apply, for instance, for, for indigent, you must go to the municipality, the municipality will send you then to high court, high court will then send you back to the municipality. Can't we have a, a, a committee or people within the municipality that can help the elders or people to go to this, to, 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 to high court? Because I think high court are treating us different, and, and some, some of them are being, doing favoritism. Because if you go there, utla, utla kore, you must need, you must go and look for a lawyer, but you tell these people, I'm coming here for indigent. You need indigent for what? Do you need a lawyer for indigent? Because indigent, you don't need a lawyer, it's only when you, when you, when you claim the estate or, or the executive. Number three, someone just alluded to me that in Blumanda also, the houses that are built there, the, the, the roofs are falling. We had this program where we used to build houses for the, these crack houses. I don't see this program anymore in, in, in the Northern Cape, I don't see this program in, in, in our, in our municipality, thank you leadership.
Thank you very much.
Koko palina la kona tate, sorry? Kahiso? Mohapi, kia kola boha.
My name is Kahiso Mohapi.
Kahiso?
Ra Kahiso, babu alwe?
Ora ro abili, come and register some of those houses there. Proceed, Bob, proceed?
Thank you very much Chairperson, my name is Kahiso Mohapi, I supported the bill Chairperson. Sorry again, I need to speak Zona. Kia kola boha modula stulo li na laka ke Kahiso, me ki du malana lemo lakomu onu. Ke zafala kora matata ama nti a, re lebanan tatalo ne, ke kutsengwa tirison, hamola komo kabuona. Ha renere kacna kora rabola bu tataba kora utsengwa tirison, kuka, rekacna, ku dira katalopele. Ho skakanale, di peto, ho se di nte, ilohora, ditalala matata a, ilohora kona kora rabolo. Matata ama holo, modula stulo arna loane, fana fa ama nale, kua ahiwa ka matlo. Ama na tatali matlo, sisi dira kha, kha nti fana fa ke kore. Matlo a, ahiwa fana fa, tataha, a, ahiwi ka, zela e chwanete, kota kha, siya bo lenjo bu chwanete. Ya me kena li chiti ya modula stulo. Sisi ya ya kore, renele procedure, ilohora mohoyone, kiya di tenda, ra zela ilohora, ha di dira. Ine tse di la, akare zang ba tu, bole monache yote, pele dira ya kua aha i dira. Ilohora, kona ku dira kore ba tu, ba ba tha aha, ine ba ba thopiwa, kaza la e siame, kahone. Ha rasa diri jaloo, seno se innafe la tse nyo ya madi. Kha ya bo beidi, eki batlanku, kha hisa fana fa, ke kore, ku developi aha ma fasin motulo nyaro na, kuo bo nyata, kua sama ke ike to tata. Kaza lo re leza, ike te kha, enu eleone, ega bewa li, koe yakaha ke khalosa. Konele procedure, ente ya di tenda ra, e ilohora, e chwanete kore i dira, kaza la e chwanete. E ita tu zang kore, pele ku dira dira epa ya kua aha. Ba tu ba kona koseka seka, le fasile kota aha moholo, kahone ha ba ke dira jaloo. Matakona kora rabola matata pele anna de, matata a chwananle, kua panyeha ka ma bo da. Matata a, a ama nale kanya kora motuyo, aha longuntu, egazo ele motuyo, chuanmole lapela ba tu, baba humane kile. Number two, ha ilohora kua ahiwa lela, ba la ba tu, ba ilohora, ke ba ba di kobe di ma keli, baba humane kile. Konele process, e ilohora, kana kongo ha ba kha, ba tu bao. Uvichela kana kongo, ilohora ba romela, ko high court, e ko koyone, vichamba bolela kore, ba ba te lawyera, kora lawyera e ba tu se. Kora processi, itla, kona kona zola bele, kaka kha, me bu tata ke kore. Motu utla bona dang lawyera, ha ilohora, uza moli lapela ba tu, baba humane kile. So sisi nse yala kasi di re khalo kha, ibo tatabo bu chwanete kore, bo lije, me bu bakangwe. Sabo raro, re, na moma tung aile kore, ma rulela atingawa, ma rulela ating, kase a siame. Ele kaleba kala kore, ha kona kua ahiwa kota kha, fe la ku simula kong. Ku diri si so ba tu, baba sa diri ndiro, kaza la e chwanete. So ki ona matata ma, araba tala kha, khalosa modula stulo, kala kora.
Thank you very much, the next ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Haksau Shupa, please don't go there. Haksau Shupa, don't go there, please. Allow those that have given them opportunity to, to sit down.
Bahai zo, alfanen chulo, if I didn't point you, please, can I ask you a request that you don't sit on the chair until I do so?
Three minutes?
Meto tuleme, arofela?
First one?
Alright, good afternoon everyone, my name is Kahiso Rapodile, and I'm a local contractor. I support the bill, however, I have a few issues which I'd like to discuss. Chair, some of the mentions here on the bill, particularly the warranty fund, I've noticed that some of them speak to the existing JBCC contract for subcontractors. So the JBCC already speaks to that, so I wanted you guys to note that, particularly the warranty fund. So when you mentioned the warranty fund, it's already mentioned when it comes to the final account of a project for the subcontractor, so I just wanted you guys to note that as well. So that we don't have issues where acts and particular laws are already overlapping. And then, the second issue that I had was, on one point four, it says the bill seeks to create an enabling environment for new entrance into the home building industry. However, there's no provision which protects the exploitation of local labor and subcontractors. So generally on such projects, as I've noticed, most of the local subcontractors and the local labor, the JBCC and existing tender contracts do not protect them. So if we can include that, I think everyone will be fine. And then also, on two point two of the summary of provision of bills, we don't, we just mentioned the definition of build. However, before the project starts, it starts at the design phase. So you find, most of the issues that I've heard, houses cracking, roofs, I want to believe most of these issues stemmed from the design aspect of the tender. So before it came to implementation, the design issues took place and somewhere somehow they were overlooked. So if we can include the aspect of design, prior to design, then I want to believe we'll be fine there. And then on chapter two of the bill, I've seen that you've mentioned NHBRC. Now, NHBRC existed with all the problems that we've heard here of the cracked houses. So if we can monitor them to find out, to say, what challenges did they face? Because all these things took place under the watch of NHBRC, and CIDB included. However, these, these particular bodies seem to only have power at a national and other larger provinces. In the Northern Cape, I know for a fact that most of our, of these institutions are dysfunctional by nature. So you can go to CIDB today, they tell you, no, the system is off. You can go the next day, they tell you that, no, this is a national issue. But it's here, how does the subcontractor or the main contractor then implement decisions based on the project? Because the community, as you've heard, they are very frustrated. So some of these issues are not just mainly the contractor, it is just people in the value chain. And the bill doesn't speak about the value chain in particular. Because you talk about skills development, but you have a construction, construction sita, which is there, which is also dysfunctional by nature. So how do you deal with people coming into the industry to develop and become competent contractors to avoid the build, the, the, the houses that are being built?
You can add other things there, thank you very much.
Kia kola boha moradisi. Li na laka ke rapodile, ora podisi.
Ha uka warranty fund, Moradisi. Murito komanen sasa, ha ki bo nu, uma ka kanya hori, matro lea a rabitan di warranty fund. Asama kana yang le kato lela JBCC. Katsua etso ya kya hokopa, tata Moradisi hori, lebela, di kuwa lo so di kuwe tsumfa o. Mo kanya kifetan hori supa ye, ya matro le, hori, esama kana le, sexi tsengisibule fo di mo fa, ha JBCC. Kanya bo beidi, Moradisi, ki nka e wibu amo, mo lewa, 1.4, o uanka ma etomo, abata osama kana le peto lo ya ekonomi mo industry. Nte tla leha peke re, Moradisi, hori di tla mele, tedi amanale ma di, a seteng ala trole. La nete fa so, a uanka, di ri so lo ya mananeo, a sato bo ya di industry, ho aha matlo. Nka e woi, Moradisi, e grata hori fitisa. Kya hori, mo uanka le fa palela NHBRC, sexi bua kya hori? Moradisi, NHBRC matro, a siye kha fela, banse ba lete, me ha ki, ha ki tumelikanya hori, ha ho opa, o ti sang, di tse ye kwa tama tu, mo leka lela NHBRC. Katsu boka, Moradisi, mo ka e mo, mo Northern Cape, re na le, bo tata ba hori, ha wa leha pe, ha re ya, hokopa tu so, ko di papusin, kwa tsa di officein, re pe la rabolela, ka sisti mo hori, sisti me pe la, iti mileme re ha re bole tu so. Ya le boja.
Next.
Chair, I support the bill. I want to raise the following. It has come to my attention that those home builders who used to register and have their certificate, they don't have skills and expertise of building. What appear in their certificate, they will be saying they have certain knowledge. But when it is time or when they have been given opportunity to perform their duties, they are failing. The second issue is that, the issue of the board. I don't know how this board are being appointed or selected or, how do they apply? Because if the board is being in office, but they don't have skills and knowledge and expertise to interrogate the reports of the executives, especially the chief finance and whatsoever, as far as the bill is concerned or the bill is saying, it will be difficult for them to control the executive. And as far as I'm saying right now is that, if you don't have an expertise, it will be, they will fail in the law that we are talking about here. Because the bill will be the law at the end of the day. The second, the third one is the issue of officials of government. Today, we are discussing the law, but I don't see officials of government, including councillors. Because issues that have been raised here, those are issues that emanate from municipalities that could have actually marked, so that they must deal with it. Lastly, so, it has come to my attention that informal settlements are all over the country. Even at our place, Pampishta, where I'm coming from, there is an informal settlement there. Now, what we are saying is that for the bill to assist us is that the officials of government also, especially from the municipalities, they must attend meetings of this nature, so that they must assist how to deal with problems that we are encountering, the problems that we have been hearing here. And then the issue of the deeds of grants. I've never hear, actually. Actually, we have a problem with lawyers here. Lawyers are very expensive. When you go to the municipality and then you said you want the deed of grant, they will refer you to attorneys, and attorneys are very expensive. So I think the law must also protect us because we are unemployed, we are indigent, we don't have knowledge, and certainly so. It has come to my attention that there are several in this document where the committee referred us to certain provision of laws, like act, regulations and policies. It is, I've noticed here, there are a lot of referrals as far as the laws are concerned. And our people on the ground, they don't understand these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bana, habana, di tu to tereka lota hori, ba gala kela matlo. Fela bana le, ma kola itupo, a ba rangare, bana le, ki to ya ho aha matlo. Meaning they have the certificates, ma re, haba, haba diri kota la siya ta obon ta hori, ba aha matlo a siyame. Sabo beidi, Moradisi, kina le ma tapa a, ba diri di pu so, ba ilen bo ne bo counselora, bo me ya ra. Kumpia noh ko kwanne fa, kwa tsa ko uka ka mo lao. Ma re ha ki ba bo ne, mosi cha benesas ko kwanne se kumpia noh. So, kina le tumalano, ya hori, kina le tsepo ya hori, haru uka ka mo lao. Ba tu baba re tla tse unko pele, ba ilen bo ne ba aha maspa la ba tu nse ba ne te mfa. Hori, re kha noh ho tu sana, kasi ritle ho se soboka ya kumpia noh. Moradisi, nte tla leha pe ki fitise kanya ya di lawyer ra. Si bui seso si sesi si fitile, mo mora, si uanka di title di. Lenla ki, kina le bo tata ba hori, di lawyer ra, se uka uanka to ne tse fa. Se elen horo chuan tere di duwele ma di, hori ba refa di title di. Di a tu ra merona ra ba di, ko ba di kutuane, haru kha noh ho aha fora, kwa tsa ho fitela la kha noh, ho pa tala ma di a, a ba re ba ta, hori ba fele ta ba refa di title di. So kha noh ho ya mo ba hudi, ba ilen horo ma pe la ka pension, haba kha noh ho aha fora, ma di a ba kuwa ki di lawyer ra, se, hori ba, ba fitele ma kola itupo, a ba du lango, ko ma fe longa bo ne. Thank you.
Thank you, Comrade Chair, and all protocol observed. Greetings. I heard the people speak. Mine is clear. My name is Brian Franklin Boltman. I'm a resident in Blumanda, Mokake Street, Kimbar. I am a former resident of Lerato Park, which is with 30 in Kimbar. Honorable Chair, with all due respect, we are crying for one thing here, which is great service delivery, which is enshrined into, in the constitution of the country. As to there will be houses, security and comfort. But the houses that are built for our people are not of the standards that we expect of. Like the other speaker has said, the houses in Phase 1, where many elderly people are residing, tomorrow we'll have a disaster, almost like in Jagasfontein. The municipalities and local governments are not being monitored thoroughly by national. My request, Honorable Chair, is that national must do its job and thoroughly monitor local and provincial governments. Manis are being given, and the tenders are being given to contractors who give us these houses that are crumbling. Do you understand? So simple. There was a mother who was a first speaker from Blumanda. I'm also residing in a house like hers. Those houses are built with slabs, brought together with like ropes or what do you call these things? Irons. When it's winter, they come together. When it's summer, they open up and you can see a person through your house. I'm lucky to be young, younger than that first mother that spoke. I can save my children when I'm at home, but when I'm at work, anything can happen. When you go to Lerato Park Phase 1, I challenge you to do that before you leave Kimbari today. Go to Lerato Park Phase 1. You look at the flats that are there. You cannot even take up your bed to your bedroom. You must disassemble it. Your wardrobe, I don't want to speak about it, and they are crumbling. And we have got blind people, elderly people. When my memory serves me well, Motew was the constructor. And I was residing that side that time. So I asked that national government pay a visit to that place and see how these houses are crumbling. It is not a request to national government. It is a demand that these houses be demolished and rebuilt. I thank you.
Thank you. Kya kila boja la, chono, mudula stulu, lina lakaki, Re Brian Bosman, ya kwa tamo, Kimbari fano fa. Eka tu to, mudula stulu, ki ra ta kwa tlalo sa fano fa, horo ma tata ma nzi ar na lo ne fano fa, ama na li di di relo, se re chuan tse hori, di di rele, se elen horo molao te wa naha. Ki ono o ubu an horo chuan tse hori, re di di rele. Enjano, rale ma tata a hori, ra haloa matlo, a bo lenjo bo kwa ta se, mudula stulu. Fela ja ka si bui seso si si fitile seso na ho bua. Re bo ne se ni si dira ka tata, mo le felele, lo chwanale la, Jagasfontein, ho noh mo noh, Kimbari, ele ma tata ar ra di relo anke, bo masepala, mo koli ki bo, pu so ya se leha, local government. So now, bo tata bo na le bo ne kya hori, ba tu baba ne wan diro ya ho aha matlo. And national, e ba beili, kya ho bo na horo, abadi ra diro kati la, ka mo ho aho chwanete. Habadi ri se ho kwa tlelele. Eneki bo tata bo na le bo ne, mo hara ka di local government, le di provincial government. Hunsiwa di tendara, horo ho achiuha matlo, me ho achiuha matlo, a bo lenjo bo kwa ta se. Eki ho tlalo se se mudula stulu ka, sekai, nto ire na mo hoiyo ne. Nto ar na iya chiyo ka di slabs. Matlo ano a, ka mo ho achiuha, ingati, o tse akopanchoi, a chwa rahaani. Jano, har le mo na konya mariha, matlo ano a, akopa na tata. Kan kaya maymo abosa. Me haile kana koya selimo, ho na li di pa ta, mo hara ha wo na. E di se u si dira hori, kama tsa ma, anne anta asisi yecha. Ele se se bo ntsang hori, ho kana ka tlaha kozi. Na kong lewmi, ka matlo ano, ar du la mo hona, a sa emang still. Ho na jano, jana ki tumela hori, ngakha na ho siru letza, bana ba me, horo baska ba tlaha la ki kozi, kan kaya nto ho noh ho ba we la, ha ki lete mo hai. Jano, ha ki se te mo hai? Ki atse yecha hori, se go le so go se kana sa dira kala la ba na ke, kan kaya mu futuwa nto ire na mo hoiyo ne. Kya hokopa, ho chalenda, mudula stulu, horo, oye kuli fe lo la, ar na leire na koiyo. We ho le ba di flat, se di achiuha inte. Utabona, mi futuwa ya ma tata a, ar na lo na, ar leka ho bua loe na ka wo na. Bo tata bo bo ntsala, e di achiuha ingati di flat e za te. Ha ona le bete, o reki le bete. Ha kha noh ho itza, we tsa kuseta ko, burulele bo bo ko hudi mo bo ona kha noh bo. O chuan tse hori, we tsa tla mo lo, lo kwa tsa la haile fe ne chara, we tsa tla mo le. Haile bo ho lo jo burile, horo, o kha noh ho fitla kaya noh ko hudi mo, o bo bo e we kopanya ha pe. Ki lu te, lo kha di akata, a ka ni tsa, se fa kha noh ho achiuha ma fe lo ano, ar na mo ho one. Me re kopa, hori, national e beba tu banu li kwa mudula stulu. Elen hori, re di rele, di diro la kati, ka mo ho aho chwanete. Ya le boja.
Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Cabinet. My name is Duella Molusi, from Wat 16 Snake Park Putana. We accept the bill, the bill is good. Few issues from Snake Park. We understand that the house gonna be built soon at Snake Park. We've got three phases at Snake Park, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. But the main concern of the community or the residential is that the people that are doing the sanitation and the water, it is not yet complete. For example, Phase 3, yes, is complete because there's water, but the sanitation is not completed. Phase 1 and Phase 2, there's totally no water at all. So how can the houses be built where there's no water? Two, the other issue is that we request that before the house must send a team that must go investigate before building of the houses. And there is also, next to the next one, there's a site that is called a temporary site next to the Phase 3. We're talking about 1,400 people that are staying there, and the water is coming from underground. When you dig for the toilets, you go about a meter down, then the water bubble out. So it is a serious, we've got a problem of that land. It is not a suitable land to build houses. Rather, maybe the geo people must, before the house can be built, the geo people can come in and then check who is soil good for houses. Two, the lastly, I think, we'd really like to see all the temporary people be removed from that area because when the rain is coming, like the month of the rain is coming, it is a totally disaster in that area. I've hear some people have mentioned that their houses is full waters, but it is very same issues is happening at the temporary now. When it's raining, water is just going, passing through the people's houses, even including the waters that is coming from underground. So we really plead to the national that must send a team and investigate that issue. Thank you very much.
Ya le boja mudula stulu, lina lakaki, Re Duella Moruesi. Ki toa ko Snake Park, me kina le ma tata a ka nama be di kwa za, ama raro, angata kwa tla kisafano. Ona ama na le, matlo a ilen horo achiuha, ko Snake Park. Ma tata ar na lo ne, ki ma tata a, sanitation mo ho le mezi. Di diro tse nse pele se di bo tsa kati noh, se ha di a felele diwa. Strata se na mo ho so na so na se fe dile. Me fela bo tata bo, se tse ngabo ne ki bo ne bo tata ba, sanitation ko Phase 1, le ko Phase 2. Ko te unko hona, ha hona mezi, ho tlelele. Motuwi po sa horo matlo, aka achiuha jaan, mo le fe long, lele se na ngomezi. Me ki se u si di ru le, more na ante. Nkaya bo beidi, eki la kha, ya tlalo sa fano fa kya hori? Re kopa, hori, pele ho achiuha matlo, mo ma fe long ar na mo hona. Ba tu ba chwanete kwa ra ba, ta ba tla ho investigator. Mu o ho ta me ho achiuha mo hona, ba investigator site. Ho na jano jana, re ali di site, se di bita hori, ki di temporary site, se di leha ufele Phase 3. Jano, ma tata a ho bo ho sa investigator, kya horo ko Phase 3. E re na le mezi, elen horo a ta, a chwa ka fatla se ha mu, aorwa epa, aoka epa bo te, njo bo lika na le just one meter, mezi a chwa. Jano, kana koya fa, ho na di pula. Ma tata a mezi ar na lo ne, ki a chwa ngafa tsa ha mu, le mezi a chiswa ngi pula. Oka kanya fela hori, ki bo tata jo bo kana ka mu jo, bo e le hori, re leba ne le bo ne. Ki lo ne leba ka la ho bo, re kopa, horo hudi roa di investigation, pele pele ho achiuha, ho le ju, mu futuwa mu ore le mo ho one. And then, nka ya bo raro. Kya hori, re na li di lo se, di bita hori, ki di temporary, o kha noh leba tu baba, bita hori, ki di temporary people, kha horo ba mo temporary site. Re kopa, horo ba tu siyo, mo ma fe long anten jaloo, kan kaya ma tata ar builen ka wo na. Kya hori, ha pula, se di ma ta di na, ho na nta hara. Innana e disaster, innama tata senka na ka sepe. Ba tu baba le mo matong anten jana, uru baro alelewa, ki mezi a di pula. Kaza lo reletza, i ke te, bo tata bo noh bo bo ka, bakangwa. Re kopa, hori, national e rumele a team, e tsa ho investigator di cha le ma fatse, pele ho achiuha mo hoo tso ne. Rale boja mudula stulu.
Thank you very much. Let's proceed. Please, at the back, can we listen to one another?
To me, I don't know. 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 What seven? I don't know. What committee? I don't know. 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 Then, you have to, nationally, I don't know. Let's all play, municipality. I don't know. 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 Point, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Before I can, I don't know. 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 Ten years. After ten years, I don't know. 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 Residential place. But today, residential place. I don't know. 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 Mayor. Spokesperson, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. That place is not a residential place. I don't know. 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 And then, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Eleven years. I don't know. 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 After, councilor, I don't know. 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 Then, you have to. I don't know. 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 You have to, nationally. Nationally, I don't know. 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 You have to.
Thank you very much, Chairperson, together with your committee. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Rebecca Mamokeke from the place called Ferkanu, if I pronounce it right. Okay, I also appreciate your presence once more. Most importantly, I'm standing here before you to actually support the bill. I mean, great pleasure to support the bill. But allow me also to indicate some few points that this municipality in its supply key must serve the people because they, they, they actually brought some promises to us in terms of building houses for us, but until today, that promise hasn't been fulfilled. Secondly, Chairperson, allow me to indicate the well-known place called Y2K. Chair, in this particular place, about tennis back, people were relocated or moved from this place because initially, this place was not conducive to have residents living there or rather to construct houses in this place. Thirdly, there's another place, Chairperson, called Raifmas Mark. Raifas Mark. Sorry about my pronunciation there. But to make a point is that there are some developments in this specific place, Chairperson. But to my surprise, initially, this specific place also was not meant for residential purpose because it was indicated back there that this place was actually meant as a golf site, so to say. But however, now people are living in that place, Chairperson. My worry, Chairperson, with sadness today, allow me to bring your attention that there's a child of eleven years that unfortunately was buried also today. Although I don't have much details on the cause of the death, but I suspect that the water situation surrounding that place could have led to the death of that child, Chairperson. If I were to refer back in the times where we used to buy a house with one grand chairperson, it's, it's saddening me again to say that these specific houses are now in shambles because you are experiencing some cracks in those houses. I'm losing confidence and not knowing if the government will come to party in order to assist us to rebuild or renovate or fix those houses that we bought them so cheap back in the time. We humbly request and we plead nicely to you, Chairperson, to come to our rescue, to assist us in our request. I also understand that you have some processes that you need to follow as she already indicated, the Rome was not built in a day, but we request your humble assistance in this. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you.
To me, I don't know. I don't know. You have to. And what had to be done? I don't know. 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 So I don't know. 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 So I don't know. Especially the town. You have to. Because I don't know. Then, you would have been there.
Person, thank you, Chairperson. My name is Kibiza Mang. I just want to relate to the problem that I have here. And it's all about water again, the water that comes into the house. Chairperson, this is because in my yard, there are three drains. And what happens is that the water comes through the front door into my house. So when I see the clouds accumulating just before it gets to rain, I need to rush off very quickly, gather some soil with which I'm going to build a little mound in front of my front door so that the water cannot be able to get into the house. So my problem is that all around, I've got water gushing into my house. It's my serious problem. I'm relating this to you, Chairperson. Thank you very much.
Good day, everyone. Thank you. My name is Nosmanga Dondolo. I'm from Wat Five. First of all, I would like to say that I do agree with the bill. However, the bill, just like many other bills, is beautiful on paper, but failure to implement leads to chaos in our communities. My dear parliamentarians, it's always a privilege and an honor to have you within the communities most because we feel that you are very far from us. However, we do need, as you come, for you to take note of the community's grievances and do something about it. Implementation, monitoring and evaluation of this bill is the problem in our communities. And this leads to corruption because whatever is done is not evaluated on a constant basis. It's not monitored, leading to people doing just what they want in our communities. From the start of our government, I believe when you look at the houses and the differences that government has made, it's huge. But because the administration part is not done properly, this cannot be properly measured. Thus, people do not see that government has really worked in our communities. We have an issue with title deeds. We have an issue with the allocation of housing and the procedures before even a house can be taken out. I'm going back to what I said about administration. It would seem that administration workers in those government offices do not really know what they are doing. We sitting, in my word, we sitting within an area called Rabaji Extension, where RDP houses were built without them even being registered. People have been sitting for years in those houses. They only find out that they are not registered. The whole area is not registered when their lights start to be blocked. When they go to municipality, they are told that you're not on the system. You are not registered. How can I not register when I have an RDP house? The current councillor is busy fighting for those people to be registered. However, the process is very long and people are already tired. There again, puts a dent on work that has been done by government which reflects negatively instead of positively. So we are pleading with government to help us with title deeds. Maybe national should send down people who come and help on the ground level for people to be registered for them to get their title deeds. I've been listening to the issue of Wat Six in Blumanda. I, I, my mom stays in Blumanda. I know the issue of Blumanda. My other members, when Blumanda was started, it was nicely allocated. But however, I think because of administration, the deeds part, when those plots were allocated, people were given plots. People, the place was first developed, toilets allocated. Now, the process was tracking down the rightful owners who registered for those houses. Some of those plots stayed for years without having anyone because the people who, the rightful owners, were not tracked down. Now, people started putting themselves in those plots. Some people were put in by the then committees and councillors.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, my dear one. Your time is up. Can you go and finish the story there? And thank you for clarifying the Wat Six thing.
Then, you would have been there. I don't know. I don't know. Nosimanga Dondolo.
Good day, everyone. Good day, everyone. I'm Caroline from Tutau next to Parliament. I'm gonna talk on behalf of everybody who's staying in Tutau. Tutau, it's not a place, a proper place for people to stay. It's double packing shacks and it's unsafe. We had two mothers in Tutau. The other one was a child who was twelve years of age and then she was raped. And then, I think those people have to be relocated, because they don't even have electricity and they don't have... It's not a proper place to stay. If you guys can go there, you guys will see that it's not a good place at all.
Is it informal settlement?
It's an informal settlement.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Ngakopa mahina, please, mama. Hatai kwa mahina. Sorry. Manciani?
Mancia.
Manciani?
Nobati.
Nobati. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kisa gaspoa. Alright, realebocha mudula stulo. Mudula stulo, Lina Lameke, Nobanciani. Reena, moli filo leli biswa kwa kie Tutau. Lefelolo nulela Tutau. Tota chaseli filo leli siyame zeho kwa bato baka dula mokolo ne mudula stulo. Let letse kame kuku esen kanaka sepe, boxen jana hunileli dipola wotepe idimo kolo ne. Mutuwa nchau neng abolawa ine ilonguana yomuniane, ona athochariwa, abetelewa, aba abolawa. Rekopa kwa bato baba nangbo lefelo leli nulela Tutau, ba fudusiwe. Chaseli filo leli siyame zeho kwa bato baka nna mokolo. Kone jano jana xalina lemo takasi. Chaseli filo leli siyame zeho kaka kia katala kwa raskaha no mokolo ne. E kilifelo la ni kuku le ele kore, lerabakela matata. Kialibocha mudula stulo.
Molochi, nabaku ngengeleyo. Jaya mke la ipil. Nakwanti ngayaze ukuti. Ize ngekwasha eli right or elate. Di ngonobenga zile ya chonas, xala e Wood 6. Inriyami ya okiwango Tutauze. Inriyami ibi showhouse. Kotua i chart e akue kuwyo. Ayo chart, ifneka ichali umtu. Kune main hole, owe swirish. Unes depis bayan gena, bayeleza, nsebo ujonga. Le pipe iyan gena, izekume hole ipume kalape chartin. Isite yenu, yakue peswa le pipe epumaayo. Andi azor nizoba linwe to kum. Ngoba, i reportenda ifaka kutulima donzela. Ayeza ngayayandau. Kamaspa la akon ngatendil fuma naayo. Yati ndi hile, i spoke person sakona san buzindoku ti. Andi mukala yon ditie, inmaiki endinayo hile, hile, hile. Yo ise umcounsellarase koru. Yo ise umcounsellarau umutise. Yo ise umamutivi. Yo ise, maninjila ma counsellor, uho uwanet, ndawinukutua. Aye ngati bayabaza ulungis. Iteme yake nakai pelelo, okavelelo, nakau mukalela yo, ikala panzi. Wanukala, usi lomazi. Usi, andazwi intoni ngoko, uspikaranango, no uzao kala ukuti, abampromuti lora bamenzento. Wanukali ndogut, andi politician. That and yo politician is saying like. Anifuna i vote niti, bato pele. Bato ngoku, i office izeno sisi ngena, nghe appointment. Ku premia ndivela konna, uzaman. Anza nganamfuma na, banti bloka paymnyango bati, andi, fneka andi enzi ngati, ndise, andeni ene uzau, uzaujonga, ischedule sake, andeni banti pendule, banti kalin ndogut, difuma na nimi appointment. That, andi hambi apa, ndiazimoto zaken, ndiazbona zekona, that inzau xala apa. Nda xala mama, bandisa ku, andazori, uswazi. Uy sekretariatike, wahamba namnom counsellarau, uteporo. Ba utata i photo, zinini photo zitatuakula. I crackile, ipoliile, istena sakona, infula nakainetaya amanzi. Ayanza, dinazo i photo zakona. La traini nakai bloka ilamain hole, kutuala paan, nanndawi ohamba. But, ma kuwyo ngoku, ku election. Ban gespeti, uku zisala, abantu imi food parcels boyle, defuna i vote zetu. Nanndi batele ndatu, akon mtozo pinda ngene pa, difuna ben kupele kula chart. Di kalelum tu ngamanzi. Banti basazi net, nako kuwyo ku election. Di kela mama, ubenku mama. Uzeza, yebona ngoku, i complaint zingene. Masanga, masanga bingama mpunge, ez complaint zetu. Landelela mama ubone. Anza nganadnwe tae, i office katulima donzela. Gp office za ngweta. Divala ku premia, agan ngweta, ndizile ngoku kuwe. Andi az. Ayo chart eno xalum tu liyato. Di kela niye niichonge. Diabulela mama.
Thank you.
Greetings to the Parliament. I'm Obanga Zile Chonas. I support the bill, though it came late. I have a house that was a showhouse that has been built next to a sewage system and close to the main road. There's a pipe that comes from the main road and passes my house where the sewage comes out. I come to ask for assistance. I went to ask for assistance in the Public Protector's Office, but there was no help from me. I've spoken to a number of councillors, but they couldn't assist me as well. When I came to the office of the Premier, they said I must come by appointment. I refused to go, I stayed there and I told them, because I could see the cars, that they were there. And I told them that I am not going anywhere, I'm going to stay until I get assistance. So, one of them took, we went to my house. They took pictures of my house saying that they will assist me. The house has cracks, it is rotten. If you go to my house, you will see it. They bring rotten food parcels trying to buy our votes, because when it's time for voting, they come and campaign and when it's time to deliver, nothing happens. Please, Chair, come to our level, please assist us. I'm coming to you as I went to the public offices, Public Protector's Offices. Didn't get any help, but my hope is in you. Thank you very much.
Kialibocha mudula stulo. Kitabiso Mokhotu ko Batlu West, di khatong municipality. Ki wood committee member, portfolio kaki NGOs and health sector. Kinalibotata, kiamukala bililena, ki tumelete uko, kota uko dira lo ne. Kukono kubano kwa aitajalela, aitadireh. Me yala ki tumit. Kinalidu ngongo reho yala sepe, nyana zin, tutharu nyana zin, malo nyana zin, kuzan. Ngongo reho yaka, yankaki fifteen years back, kanakue yaka, mayara, Martalu. Hanakatlashtopasa basha, serisihiru kie Kokska, ki basha baten ko Batlu West. Bato kwa disa do to do, komatun arona adi asbestos. Ba rebatlo konsa, di asbestos, Kokska ekrele maadi. Fifteen years back, ewa salary emese ra libalela till Abtunago. Yabona, rabona rothmu di tivi kore, Free Statei, yane investigate wa, kama tudi asbestos, ba dronomo, dronomo, kothose, kothetu. Yake sinsi ki bulikeri ki, ki wood committee, ki bereka kadi NGOs, le health. Ki joamaaka, kahuwansi, kinali fifteen years, kili wood committee member. Ke teme yaka woraro e. Bati ano ki joamaaka, kahuwansi, every month, reaku bato. Ra kusati ngongo reho, ra dikuala, marahadi dira hat. Ki adi clinical, ya karamata kuli clinical. Di health care workers, se khalidi sumulute twenty-two years back, ba sumulute lena kubereka mufildi, nikeli health care worker lena. Bato ba tenge ba, banalime triki. Every now and then, bata uko promise uko bata absorbiwa kie, kie, kie health. But coming to, eh, pyro, kie deployment. Yaka keza ukuwena, beke yakuhi, uki irilwe. Uki irilwe bato basha, bambati ba bereka nuka covid. Bato kela, aramaskepselte di bereka harata yana. And bato baka banalali, eh, any benefit. Aba toka hala, bana basala ili kuzan. Le bona habachu hala, bato mo, momo, mo, mo, departmenten basinalali sent. Ki kupa kabinet, eye, eho tle tle bakapi, kanya di health care workers. Ki akupa. Labo yalo, ti kopa Kokska, edire intervention. Because of CWP members, banalimongo reho ka contract ekrelo kie, itembalatu NGO. Itembalatu e, Rebecca Northern Cape as a whole, and not Northern Cape, Francis Bart as a whole. But most of the, of the, like I said, thing, hadina di officers, bat bakra project management fee. Hakona di prentar, eh, di supervisor, le di stockhipa. Shanti di tabo kwa do to do, di kopé, kuprentel. Bat bakra project management fee. Di supervisor, apeshanti, di nse chelte mupokoto, di edisaiti. Di uko banalali, di uko zaya di reporter, di compare di reporter, di rumele, kamadi abona chomo mupokoto, patronali management fee.
Thank you very much.
Chairperson, thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Tabiso Mokhotu. I'm also one of the NGOs members, specifically within the Health Department. I also reside in Batlu West and I'm part of the committee. Well, allow me to also support the bill, Chairperson. I'm pleased with the bill and I hope and believe that this bill will succeed and to the best benefit of the residents in my area. While I won't be wasting so much time, I only have few points that I just need to bring to your attention. Firstly, Chairperson, the first point is fifteen years back, there was a group of young gentlemen that actually approached us and was, in the name of collecting our names so that they can come and assist us with matters pertaining to the asbestos, as we can also refer to the Asian Free State as that province has been investigated. But my concern is that in this issue of asbestos, nothing has been done in our area. Until today, those group of gentlemen, they never actually came back to us to fulfill that commitment. And me, as I already mentioned, that I'm part of the NGO member within Department of Health. I appear as if now I'm lying to the people because I did not get any support from the upper hand in making sure that people's expectations are met. Well, allow me also, Chairperson, few minutes to indicate that people that are actually working as volunteers within the Department of Health, they are not offered an opportunity to be employed in permanent basis. It is so disappointing, Chairperson. Also, that last week, some people were hired. However, unfortunately, those that we are hoping that they will be employed, they were not employed. So, Chairperson, in my last note, I request that you engage with Kokska to intervene on matters relating to EWC personnel, because some of them, including the itembalatu project that works, or accept projects rather, but they don't even have a mere office equipment to ensure that they have an effective administration in their office. Instead, even the supervisors for that matter, they actually spend money from their own pockets to ensure that the office administrations has been run effectively. We cannot go on like this, Chairperson, to find people as officials working the government, yet they actually spend their own last money to assist the government. So, Chairperson, please do take note of this and assist where possible, where you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last ten, but I want to indicate complaints. We want people who are going to talk about the bill. Those that have complaint must just go there and write those things there. So that we talk about the bill, because it's important to listen to what you are saying about the bill. Those that have complaints, please go and register there. I don't want to stop anybody when you talked about leaking or what. But we were appealing to yourselves. We've supposed to have started at ten. You arrived here around eleven, you started late. And these people, they are hired until two o'clock. Now it's two o'clock. So, can we get those people who wants to talk about the bill? And then those that has complaints, please go and register those complaints there. The bill, can I see the hands? Those that want to talk about the bill. One, Baba. Number two. Number three. Number four. Those that want to talk about the bill? Number one, number two, number three, number four. I've got four hands, I'm closing. Number five. Complaints about issues or wapi ndawaba. Hamba, hamba. Hamba, go and, go and, go and register. No, 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 you cannot repeat. Go and register those issues that you've forgotten there.
I want, I want to pass the bill, ma.
No, but you had your opportunity to go there.
Baga so, just fela kwa samaraisa, eh, Chairperson are, haonali di ngongo reho, siri sa aman e leku bua kamo la.
It will be passed, don't worry.
Oya kota foli. Mara, haobata ukuwa straight kabi.
Down and take it there.
Utsuletele toha, akosenyemo di du lo.
Lebuleji mama.
Kabukuzan efesh.
You have spoken, you have spoken. Hamba, go and register those things there. Let's give those that have not spoken, au napindam zalama. No pin dam zalama.
Baba kilenba bua, le skela bua kapi, rada le kota foli, kwa, khalipo ele.
I'm closing. I'm closing.
Ratu alabachai. Ratu ale.
As you write your complaint, don't make noise, please. Because you will be affecting the systems.
Kiderika sisiba lo, please, baga so, baloka disa di ngongo reho sibui. Ah, honet sisiba.
Yes, mama?
Dumela, Lina lakaki kidila dile oliseng. Kidula ko Dalport Swop. Ki mo Wood Seven, ki we la mo wood committee. Ko Dalporto, renali di jarajara, kunali matlo elongo re, sensei bato ba tenba dula modishentin.
Mama, I said I want those that want to talk about the bill. Bill. Those that wants to complain of having issues, you go and register them there on the table. Mama?
My name is Tabising Gloria Munyat. I'm from Wood Six. And I just wanted to say that I do agree with the bill. Yeah, and then my problems are right in there.
That's progressive, thank you very much.
Re, raha leboha, kai te darona, kadi kakuwa ni to taha. Re lebukela tat.
Thank you very much. As I've indicated, as you register those challenges and your problems, please don't make noise. I just want to indicate that even if you have not said it on the mic here, we are going to attend to them. Because it's our responsibility as public representative to make sure that issues that have been raised by yourselves get attended to.
Elan thoko bahai, so, kopa re, hano ntsu lekwa disa, lekwa disa, lo sa di rimudu mo open eh? La hai lekor hawa, kawa bua mo microphone unfa no fa. Thoma misa han kore, halo kwa ala di ngongo rehoka zalo na, eh, mohoborale bo mefale. Ri klihudi ela thoko, kahonaki, ma ikare belo, arona zakaba, eme di basa chaba. Kothoko mayla kore, matata alona, ah, zawati ya.
Amongst us, we have a representative from NHBRC. He's been listening as you are making inputs around the issue of the bill. I'm going to give him chance to talk to those issues and emphasize some of the things.
Eh, mohar haruna fanofar, naleba, eme di baba thangolo, khotleng la kwa ahu ya hama, keleli, video angoreki, National Home Building Regulatory Council, NHBRC. Banse baredi, sa hano ntsu lekwa kadi na koto toke, di ngongo rehoka zalo na, keta lo ba ti lo koto e la, kaha di lo di wuzelu di buile.
And we have the representative of the Department of Human Settlement nationally, who are responsible for the writing of the bill.
Me bile kaper na leba, eme di baba, o baba thangoli fa penlata me lo kama to, ba elon hori tiro ya bone, ya karata na kayo ke nationally. Ba ikare bela, ki bone ba to, baba ikare bela kahokoa loa, ha, molao thomo, o oru tere.
So I'm going to give them opportunity for them to talk to those issues that are relating to the bill. And then you get, they emphasize and clarify some of the issues that we have raised. Mister Ezekiel?
Le bone ki kloko ba kopakora ba buwe, kaha eh, ma tata mangala chalu si sing, ba chalo sehutu alessen, kaha ma tata mangala ma, ala au ma kilen. So, omongawa bone ki re, selike, kiyo ota bua.
Good afternoon, my name is Ezekiel Mchong from NHBRC.
Eh, du melangloche, eh, lina lama ki Ezekiele, ki to akolo kotala NHBRC.
I would like to greet the chairperson and the committee at large and the community here present today.
Ke ba ta kofiti sa samadume, moho modula si dulo, le maloko a committee, le maloko oke asa chaba, alin temo temo holo eno.
I would like to point out that the NHBRC does have an office here at Kimberley.
Ke ba ta kolo bolela, la korluiz, kor NHBRC, haina ofisi monu motemani.
Eh, no, no.
Inale ofi. You have one?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Train of thought, inale ofisi bahai, so ne, monu mo motemani.
And again, we do have our colleagues outside. When you get at the entrance, there is a table which you can get further information for, so that I don't have to waste more time on administrative, but also raise certain important issues for the NHBRC.
Me iting rapi, kora kafan taka, fakinaleba di regana, honali tafolana, e ba di si moho yo ne, baba thangko NHBRC. Ba talo fatsi, mo seze, oh, ki seki le, elo ekhoka, han ki takia akarata sing, le singwe, elo kore keskeka senya na, kon meki ta ama di incha di lepe di le taro.
While I was listening, sitting here, I've heard my community members complaining about shoddy works of the subsidy homes.
Hakinsake ready, se maloko asa chaba, ante abuwa fanofa, ki kulehu oma kiwa hango leh, kapi di tiro di wuzabo ferifiri, se mato asapside dileng, ah, ileng kato.
The NHBRC mandate is to ensure that each and every home built in our country is well structured, is according to the plan and follow all the technical standard which are given to the older registered home builders.
We karebelo ba NHBRC, mona kenyaro na, ki kuela thoko kore, mato ote fela ah, ah, hiwa, ah, ah, hiwa kuya, kadi polani, ze di inti to kora, ah, hiwa kato na, se wulese, se samaye, ka, tula hanyo, eh, estenense, kome to kora, ah, hiwa kama to au.
So, from what I have heard, it seems to me, all the homes, more especially these RDP homes, they've got defects and it seems again that we are not sure whether it has been homes which were enrolled with NHBRC and were built with registered home builders as stipulating in our regulation.
Ya no yaka hakinsake ready, se kilaka ela thoko kore, mato ote alon si lekwa kawa na RDP. Ekete, ah, ah, ilo kore, eb, ele matlo, abo lenjobo kua tasi, ibilemo tuwa iposa ya no kore, ame ya na matlo, ano, ah, ah, ilo ke ba to, ba elon kora ba register ilue, le NHBRC, elo kore, ata ah, hiwa ka, eh, molao urna rokho milen.
So, what I can explain here is that if there are subsidy homes which were built and you have been staying in those home within the less than five years period, please, you can as well go and see our colleagues outside so that the steps can be taken and see how those structures can be rectified.
Me ya no, ke ba ta kolo itisi ya na kora, hai lo koro, lonzo lonnamo matlo, alon kore ki matlo, addi subsidies, maybe se bakasadi ngwakadi kan na tano. Me monako nyacho ne ya no ya na, asetanale ma tata. Twe, twe, yango koba na ba di regana, baba kafan taka, falo ba chalo seze, koro, koto koto sewe di kato, ze di twanese, kabo tata yo.
As you have mentioned, one of the speakers here inquired about the warranty fund. That is where you can able to enjoy the benefit of the warranty fund if the homes were registered, were built by the registered home builders and were enrolled by the NHBRC in our record. It's our obligation to ensure that those homes receive our attentions.
Keta lo kape, elan thoko kore, eh, hai lo koro, hongo unso ona, eh, moncho, eh, eh, na glema tata mangala re. Ncho, eh, elo kore, eh, register ilua, ya ba ya enroliwa, ka NHBRC, lo kore ba to baba ne ba ya ah, halibo ne, ba kwa disi tue te. Di rang kore, vi, kola hanyele, ba di ribano kan na, bo kore, kono kusimola kora, rabola bu tata.
So I would like to plead with the community, as I conclude, to ensure that each and every project which you see as a responsible citizen, it's your obligation to ensure, to inquire whether those projects are enrolled with the NHBRC and are being built by the builders which are registered with the NHBRC. So we don't want homes being built by people who are not registered with the NHBRC so that they can receive the inspections from our home inspectors.
Keta lo, ke ba kape, ke ba ta kolo bolela, lo na zakama lo ka asa chaba, kore, ki bui karebelo, joaloo na ba kai, so, kora, halo bone kona li di project, ze di to leten peletza ba to ba ah, ha. Lo na le twanalo ya kwa ya koboza, kora, ame projecti enue, le ba to baba ahang matlo au, abakwa disi to ko NHBRC. Eh, kala ba kala kora, hara ba to kore matlo, ah, hiwa ke ba to ba, o leba o fele, berisimola renale ma tata, ma kanakana, arenzi rukuaka one, kone ya no.
So, if there are things which you see out there which are related to corruption or bribe with our home inspectors or anything which you suspect that it's not a good conduct from a home builder, please, we do have a toll-free hotline number which you can report and you'll remain anonymous so that you can able to take step and make sure that the right things are done to those particular conduct.
Kape, re ba ta koro luiz, kore, eh, hano ntsu le bone konce koe twe lezi, kosa luiz, ga di tiro di wuzabo ferifiri, ze di kato andi amanale ba chakubi ba ma, ki di inspectora. Eh, le ela thoko koro, hongo kona li, di tiro za kodiyan zoma, di bribe, corruption. Iting kore, renali, a toll-free number, elon kore, lo ka eleleza, lu reporte bu tata koho yo ne. Me, how to ke kui itis kore kue na man, how to ke konce alina la kaha. Lo ka za, hatu eh, twanale eh, li ru tusa kora rabola bu tata.
Eh, chairperson, in the last point, I would like to concurtise the members of the public. The NHBRC is passionate about emerging young builders. So there are programs which we roll out to, especially women who are interested in constructions, which we roll out and take them through to the program of teaching them how to build. So those program schedules can be accessible in our table out there for more information. Thank you very much.
Kape, modula stulo, ke ba ta koko ne, la fanofaka, koha chalo seza ba, ah, hi fanofa kore, eh, re, na, ronajaka NHBRC, eh, re rata tata, ibile kore, re passionate, kaka nyako ah, ha ma. Now, iting, kore, renali di program, ze di kobeilwen, ze elo kore, moho sonerata kosi nyela za ba, sha. Kowele ba to ba, elemba sadi, baba katla kela, kona le sa, e ba modi tiro nza koha ah, ha. Re, na li tafole kafan te, inali, eh, di tula hanyo ze, le ma tata to ne, lo ka ya le koshé ba kore, eh, ho trainiwa kaba, to maleba na li tiro za, kona le ze, how to lo kudi roa le. Iting koro, konce fela ya lo, ya leboha, modula stulo.
Sorry ma, sorry?
Thank you, chairperson. Good afternoon to the honorable members and members of the community.
Ya leboha, modula stulo, ki du benisa maloko, ah, to taka, moho lemas, lema lo ko, lo na maloko asa chaba.
My name is Pizo and my surname is Silolo. I work for the National Department of Human Settlements.
Eh, lina lama ki Pizo se fane ki Silolo, ki bere kela lefa, palabose chaba, la tame lo kama.
Chairperson, I just want to deal with a few issues that I think are of common interest.
Eh, modula stilo, ke rata kuma kafanofa, ki kuwe kama tata, akitza kore yo na, ah, koi lehilen tata.
First and foremost, I want to deal with the issue of consumer education.
San kanka, ke ba ta kubua fanofaka, ho, abela maloko tuto.
I've learned that members of the community are not well informed about the NHBRC.
Eh, ke ela thoko fanofa kore, maloko, aman asa chaba, kaba na ki to eka, lo kaha NHBRC.
Now, section fourteen of this bill makes it mandatory for the NHBRC to ensure that they come up with consumer education programs.
Karo ya bu fourteen, ya lo molao thomo onu, ya bua koro, ronaba to ba NHBRC, re twanese kore, re lo abele tuto likizo kaha ma imo ano.
So it means that now the NHBRC, if it not, it is not yet visible to the people through this provision of the act or the bill, it will be forced to be visible to the people and the council is expected to report to parliament on the consumer education programs.
Moho ra yango kora, hai lo kore, kwa di reha kore NHBRC, e bonele, ekete hai, kha keli lemo ba to. Etta twanale kore, epatele du kudi ra ya lo, me ba councilara, ba tsa twanale kore, ba behe seno, kopa laminteng, kore, kato eh, eke ekolo kufikela eno.
And then again, I want to talk to the issue of the transformation programs. Transformation, transformation.
Me kape ba ta kubua fanofaka, kahi eh, aman lo kuchi sa di peto kore, program ya kuchi sa di peto kore.
Mister Mchongo has indicated that there are transformation programs in place currently.
No, mo, remchongo, osa za kora, chalo sa kore, renali, kato eh, so le lampi lo, kone, ya no ya na, ya di program, ze wo ze lo kore, me ike la lazo, kuchi sa di peto kore.
Now, this bill still encourages, now it reiterates that the NHBRC must ensure that they utilize the warranty fund surplus to come to the people, to the communities and provide trainings to the emerging contractors who are new entrants in the built environment.
Me bile, eh, wa bua malakomo onu, o kore, eh, kama tza mangrenale di warranty fund, ze elon kore, konce kuma kiwa kato ne. Ke to ne ze di diran kore, eh, kuchiyo mo ba to kore, ba ne we tapiso, e ba ekhoka, ya kama lo ba asa chaba, elon kore, lo to lo kolo koro, kona kore, program eh, eh, ya kuchi sa kadi peto kore. Sinjente, itse wa tiruso, kamo kha onse ya.
Now, I'm saying, local builders are encouraged now to ensure that they approach the NHBRC so that they can get uplifted with the transformation programs and be able to participate in these programs of the NHBRC so that they can be well equipped.
Keta lo, khe, ba to ba elemba, ah, he baba mole filo la lo na, koka na mole mo kore, ba, in kwa disa le NHBRC, elon kore, eke ekolo koro ba na, ze la ya kora, ba kolo kozaka rolo. Mo tula hanyo, eh, eh, ya di tapiso, ze elon kore, kabo filo, etta be, ele, ze di ba neylen kizo, le kono ya kore, kuchi sa di peto kore, ze molakomo onu, o ba ta kore di neti.
Lastly, chairperson, I would like to encourage members of the communities to ensure that when they build houses, when they build their own houses, they must have them built by registered builders so that they can benefit from the NHBRC cover.
Keta lo, kaper, re ba ta ke ba ta kore, kota le tama lo kasa chaba, modula stulo kore, yaka hano ntsu ya na, famo nguli monguwalona, abata kui ikachela ncho. Di rang kore, ncho, eh, eb, elon kore, eh, register lo ko NHBRC, elon kore, hai kanale ma tata. Ete ekolo koka varu, akelo to lelaro na la warranty fund.
So government subsidized houses are enrolled with the NHBRC and must be built by registered builders, it's requirement in terms of this bill.
Keta lo, mato, ai lo kore, ya asapside si le, ah, ah, hiwa, ki kuso, atwanese kora, aba, ah, register lo ko NHBRC. Elon kore, ata akolo koka varu, akelo to lele, haku ka taha ma tata.
Thank you very much.
Ke ya leboha.
Thank you very much for the inputs by the NHBRC and
re leboha la di trialo, ze reseton kudi ne, wa ki, balé, kotala NHBRC.
And the Department of Human Settlements.
Moho lelefa, palatame lo kama.
There are some few issues that have been raised that I must clarify.
Honali, di incha, ma tata alema lo, ai len au ma kiwa, ke ba ta kwa, chalo sa sinke ya no.
Maybe I must start by saying, all your input are welcome.
Ma ki simola kaha lo bolela, kori trialo, zo, ke ze di inti sing, di amo kela seki le.
All the issues that you have raised and registered, we are going to follow them up.
Eh, ma, ma tata ote ala chalu si sing, moho lela, ala kwa di si sing, ri lo komeka meka na lo.
There is an issue of the unfinished houses that was raised.
Eh, but tata bo ngobo tari sing, ke jo ma, ai lo kora, hai si afetse, kora, ah, hiwa.
We want to indicate that Minister of Human Settlements came to parliament and made commitment that she is going to unblock this blocked project or she is going to finish, make sure that those houses get finished.
Eh, ke ba ta kolo, thoma misa zafano koro, dona ya, eh, lefa palatame lo kama, ilaya, tako paramenteng, me atika, ai tama kore. Eh, projecti ya ma, mahai au, ai sing asetoko ah, hiwa, e bito kore, ki di block project, utlo koto thoma misa kore, eh, ya, idia fit, idia fitwa.
As the committee, for the last month, starting of month of September, October, August, September, we've been meeting with the emises of various provinces. Last, as we are coming here, we've met with the emis from Northern Cape, emis from Western Cape and emis from Western Cape.
Me ya no, ke ba ta kolo itisi, fanofa koro, koto, haka, August, kofika kasa September, ri leratoara di kopa, no li, di M, M six.
Malochotlad petition. One of the things that we requested from them to brief the committee was on the implementation of this unblocked project, eradication of mad houses, and then eradication of asbestos roofs. Indeed, they have presented their programs and progress on the implementation of these houses. And the block project program, it's Minister said because there are many in the country, we will finish them within the three years, starting from this financial year. And as we are engaging with those, with members of Executive Council, we were asking them the question, where are these contractors that has done shared work? What is it that you have done? Are they still doing business with government? And if so, why? And MECS, they've actually promised these committees that those people, they found their penalties. Some of them, they maneuver and change names and come with new names and companies. But they've actually put the system in place. That's why this bill mandates NHBRC to make sure that all the builders that will build houses in the country don't have to register with NHBRC. And when this Department of Human Settlements has been created in the country, it was called House, Department of Housing. And therefore, we have realized that it has created problems for government where you have houses that have been built without water, sanitation, roads, and blah blah. That's why now it's called Human Settlements. It means that no houses must be built where there is no service stand, no electricity, and grading of the roads. There must be entrance to those houses. So we want to appeal to our councillors that you are the people that do account to the people. Don't allow any construction to start without those issues that were raised. The people, they don't know that you are not responsible for building houses. That's why they are complaining on you because you are the leadership that stays with them. It's important that you up your game in monitoring the development in your area such that such thing should not happen in the near future. As councillors, you must be able to contact us as members of Parliament if such things continue in your area so that you can intervene when it's still early. There are issues of title deed that has been raised. The department, we can mention that the department frequently briefed us about the title deed programs, but they have challenges. One, people are fighting among themselves on this title deed. Two, people are staying in the houses that does not belongs to them. You'll not get any title deed. Some instances, like the issues that you are raising, that you have built in other persons' land, you'll never get a title deed. There is no miracles that can be done except to see how we relocate you to other places so that you can get the title deed. And we want to encourage our people to cooperate with the system because you would stay there with force, but your children are going to suffer because they will never be entitled to that house because it's not registered in your name. We are going to work with you that your problems get resolved. But when we says that, please allow the municipality or department to give you another house somewhere, you must be ready to move because if you don't have a title deed, your children are going to suffer. The other issue that was raised was on the people waiting for long in the queues as they applied for houses. Minister has made commitment that one of the challenges that he has realized was that this beneficiary list, as is drafted by what committees, what councillors, what would happen is that when the other what councillors come, he starts the process from the scratch. He disregarded the old list. Therefore, you then have people who would say, but I have a receipt. My house was supposed to have been out, therefore, but I don't get houses. Then the minister has actually came to Parliament and made that commitment that is going to digitize the beneficiary list. Now, but Tata, in that, how do what councillors change? Yeah, no, but how many? And the processes will then be transparent. You will know that on the list of beneficiaries, I'm number hundred and something. And therefore, now they've built hundred means that in the next term, it's my turn. And a further made commitment that with the MECS, that people with disability, child-headed families, and elderly, they should not queue on the beneficiary list. They must jump the list and be prioritized on the list. If there are any child-headed families or a disabled person that you know and an elderly, like Gogo, who was robbed of her house, doesn't have a home, please contact your what councillor or municipality. If you don't get the response, take it up with us as Parliament and give us the detail, we'll respond with immediate effect. There are other issues that were raised of the responsibility of municipalities. We want to appeal to municipality that as we live here in Kimbali, please come back and resolve those issues because we will call you and ask you about an individual issue that was raised in this meeting. Because if we call you to Cape Town, it's not going to be very nice. So we want to appeal, we know that the speaker, there are councillors, please assist the communities. There was a lead who raised the issue on he's not working but is expected to pay water and electricity. In terms of the policy of government, they're supposed to be part of indigenous and is supposed to get water and electricity that is in the indigenous policy for free. Please update your system so that as you register indigents and others lose jobs, others because of disaster becomes often. Our system must be up to date so that you are able to implement the policies of government correctly. Lastly, we have noted that NHBRC, though they have offices here in Northern Cape, but the manpower is not up to scratch. We want to appeal to NHBRC that you have to make sure that each offices have people to respond to the issues that are raised by our communities. Because if indeed we had enough capacity, some of the issues that have been raised here, they could not been existing. We want to appeal to you that let's make sure that these offices has required personnel to be able to do monitoring, particularly the inspector, they should be those that qualifies to do the work. Who are still appealing. Next time will not be appealing. So thank you very much. We want to take this opportunity to thank you. Thank all of you for availing yourself for this public hearing. And all issues, as I've indicated, that you have raised on the bill, as we are going to discuss as a committee, we are going to make sure that they get integrated into the bill and strengthen this bill which must become your wish and your aspirations. With that note, we are going to request any volunteer to come and pray for us and close this meeting. And when we are finished praying, please don't leave because there is food that has been prepared for yourselves. And we want to thank all the teams that have worked with us for us to have this meeting, what committees, what councillors. Thank you very much. Can we have somebody to come and pray for us?
Let us close our eyes and pray at on sosa uwa tumak and burt. Ra wa morana waruna Jesu Christe. Josiente ya xalalelo re kopanze mudimo aruna. Inisika kichoya rona mudimo kan bobo tlale juarona. Inele kaha wena mudimo. Mudimo osalo lete ngdi tava lema watle di so tsualwe. Wena mudimo keha unso lete. Kochile ba thanka ba kaku mudimo aruna. Kuchokua hudimo mudimo aruna. Oba pepe le mudimo. Onile monkani wa di koloi tsabo ne mudimo.
Thank you.